Good evening, are these on? Good evening, it is 5:30, I would like to call the January 14, 2025 Committee of the Whole to Order. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Alderman Gregory.
Here, somewhere.
We'll get him when he comes back in.
Okay, Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Notaryano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donilon.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Chair Conley, a quorum is present.
Thank you very much. First thing on the agenda, oh, accept a motion for approval of the December 23, 2024 Committee of the Whole minutes.
Sure, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk, if we could, please let the record reflect that Alderman Gregory.
Hello.
Hello.
Noted.
Has rejoined us, thank you. Madam Treasurer, do you have a treasurer's report for us tonight?
Thank you Chair, the treasurer's report for the Corporate Fund for the month of December. The beginning balance is forty-seven million, forty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars. We took in total receipts of twelve million, six hundred seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. Total disbursements in the month of December, ten million, seven hundred, sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars, which left the Corporate Fund ending balance in the month of December at forty-eight million, nine hundred, forty-three thousand and seventeen dollars. The ending fund general balance includes eleven million, seven hundred, forty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars, which is the December ending balance for the ARPA money. That concludes my report Chair, thank you.
Thank you Madam Treasurer, are there any questions for the Treasurer tonight?
Motion to accept the treasurer's report as submitted.
So moved.
All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, ayes have it. So just for everyone in the audience and for council members, tonight our presentation will be starting off with the budget presentations for next year's budget, these are part of our workshops that we do as Committee of the Whole. As we agreed to earlier, Alderman Donilon will be leading the workshops for all of our budget presentations. So at this time, Alderman Donilon, I am going to pass you the gavel.
Thank you Madam Chair and good evening everyone, I just wanted to briefly go over the plan of attack here for the budget for the next three meetings. We have a meeting this evening where we'll be getting an overview from the Department, from the OBM, hearing from the Mayor, the Treasurer, City Council Coordinator's Office, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and the Library. And our next meeting, next budget workshop is this coming Thursday at 5:30, and that will be HR, Planning and Economic Development, Office of Budget Management, Public Works. And then on the 23rd, our final workshop will be Police, Fire, Clerk, and CWLP. The workshops are an opportunity for the Aldermen and for the Aldermen and Women and the public to hear what the budgets, what the Departments are proposing for the upcoming year. It's no secret that the budget is an important roadmap for us as far as where we're headed for the next fiscal year. It's an opportunity for the Council and an opportunity for the Departments to have discussion, but it's also an opportunity for the public to interact with their particular council members that they're represented by. And if you have ideas or have things or concerns in the neighborhoods, I encourage you to contact your council member. And I appreciate this opportunity, I did want to acknowledge that we received the budget as a council just before Christmas, which is a full two months before it is required to be passed by us, we don't have to act on it until the end of February. I wanted to thank the Mayor and this entire staff and the Department Heads and all of the fiscal folks and people involved. I know it's not an easy document, I know it's gone through several, several renditions. I'm sure you start out like this and it's somewhat like this, right? But we appreciate those efforts and I'm sure the Council, Tim will, Tim Griffin will get with all of us as far as the amendment process. What will happen in the month of February is the formal budget and appropriation ordinance will be introduced. It will be introduced on first reading, it will go to committee, and then there will be a public hearing, and so there'll be an opportunity to speak at the initial introduction, an opportunity to speak at the committee meeting, an opportunity for the public to have input at the public hearing, and then the final council meeting where we have opportunities for folks to provide input. If anybody has any questions, the documents are also available online. Any suggestions, again, I encourage you to contact your council member of the Mayor's Office. On that note, I just encourage the directors as we go through the budget by Department, be succinct. We love you all, but we don't need to hear everything you did in the last three hundred and sixty-five days. We'd like to hear what the differences are in the budget, where we're headed, and of course, any council member can have an opportunity to ask as we go along. So on that note, whoever is presenting with the overview, if you could come forward to the table and welcome aboard. Please introduce yourselves.
Um, Chair.
Alderwoman Conley.
Just real quickly, will all of these presentations are going to be posted on the city's website?
I would, let's request that if that wasn't the plan, but I can't believe that wasn't the case, so.
I believe they were last year, so I just want to make sure that these are all posted online too.
Thank you very much.
Well Courtney is passing out the paper. I'd like to introduce everyone, this is our newest budget analyst, Justin Wingerter.
Wingerter, yeah.
Yep, okay. And I'm Ramona Metzger, I'm the OBM Director. And this is Jeff Ajizi, he is the Assistant Director, Fiscal Services. And distributing is Courtney Heinzel, she's a budget analyst. And we also have Ray Aral, who is our Chief Accountant, and Mike Lesko, our Purchasing Agent, and Jeffrey Blazes, our Revenue Analyst.
Mrs. Metzger, if I can encourage you to hold the mic right up to your mouth because it's sometimes difficult to pick up, thank you.
Okay, sorry. All right. Tonight, we are presenting the budget overview. Our, our first slide is of the Corporate Fund Balance History. And that's from 2010 to 2026 projected, that is being illustrated. The 2025 original budget had an ending fund balance at forty-four million, but there were deferrals of expenditures across most major objects and numerous vacancies. So FY25 was projected at forty-four million, but its estimate now is at fifty-nine million. FY26 is also projected higher than what FY25 was projected at forty-seven million. And going into the next slide, we have the charts and we show the end of year cash, and most of the cash decrease is due to the ARPA funds. We received two tranches in May of '21 and May of '22 of just over fifteen, fifteen million each tranche. The pre-COVID, pre-ARPA levels is what you will find our ending 26 projected fund balance at twenty-four point three. And, and back in FY20, at the end of, or at the first year of COVID, we were at twenty-two point four percent. So we are back in line with pre-COVID levels. This next chart is our comparable cities' tax rates. And it's just for informational purposes, we have no new taxes proposed within this budget. The yellow highlight notes the rates where Springfield is the lowest of our peers. And that is the property tax rate, which is at ninety-three point eight-five cents per one hundred dollars of EAV, which is the equalized assessment value. And for anyone who doesn't know, that is one-third of your fair market value, less any exemptions. And that is done at the county level. And Springfield, you'll notice on that chart, has no collections of liquor, natural gas, or municipal motor fuel taxes. The combined sales tax rate for use tax and hotel, hotel tax, we are at the highest rates amongst our peers. And you'll notice Normal, Illinois, no longer has a vehicle use tax, and that leaves Bloomington and Springfield within our peer cities, collecting that vehicle tax. In the category of home rule sales tax, telecom tax, and hotel tax, we share the highest rate level among some of our peers. This is our headcount slide, and this is the summary citywide. And our FY26 proposed is, again, it's back at pre-COVID headcount numbers. The authorized positions of headcount will be discussed in detail during the Department's individual workshops. The next slide will show staffing levels by Department over the previous ten years and our projected fiscal year 26. We have our fiscal year 2026 resources by type, and this is all funds at seven hundred and twenty-five million. And you can see that user charges, which is almost forty-one percent of the total revenue, that is our utilities, city water, light, and power. Taxes make up almost twenty-five percent of our total resources. Our next slide shows the expenses by Department at seven hundred and twenty-one point eight million dollars. And the forty-four percent of those total Department costs, you'll hear about when the utility presents on the last day of the hearings, on January 23. The other notable Department expenses includes the Office of Budget and Management, or it goes by the acronym OBM, so you will hear that. As the third largest agency, at fifteen percent of the total expenses, or a hundred and five million, OBM includes such funds as the Capital Improvement Fund, the Capital Equipment Fund, Legacy Point, Northeast Tiff, Self Insurance Fund, Unemployment Fund, and some other administrative funds. Public Works makes up eighteen percent of the expenses, and that's in the olive green. And the Police Department is at ten percent, and that's in the navy blue, I know it's hard to see, and that's at seventy-four million. And the Fire Department is at eight percent of the total expenses, and that is in a Kelly green. The FY26 expenses by cost center, again, at seven hundred and twenty-one point eight million. The expenses, it shows that the largest citywide cost center is Personal Services, and that's at thirty percent of the expenses. And that's followed then by other operating line categories at twenty-four, which includes commodities, equipment, telecom. And contractual services account for twenty percent. And permanent improvements are also at twenty percent of the total citywide expenses. FY26 resources by type, corporate, you'll see that fifty-seven percent of the revenue of the Corporate Fund comes from our local economy, our taxes, which are home rule sales tax, our state sales tax, property tax, city use tax, telecom, and hotel motel taxes. There's also a share of taxes that we receive from the state, our proportion, and that's at thirteen percent. Next slide, corporate expense by Department. The corporate expenses by Department includes forty percent at almost seventy-three million for the Police Department, and twenty-nine percent, or fifty-three and a half million for the Fire Department, and eight percent, or fourteen million for OBM, and twenty-three million, or thirteen percent, for Public Works. OPED accounts for six percent, and the Mayor's Office, two percent, and all others are one percent or under. Our fiscal year 26 corporate expense by cost center, Personnel Services are the highest percentage at seventy-one percent, or a hundred and thirty-one million dollars. We also have a slide showing the ARPA expenditures by Department, and that shows the expenses from fiscal year 22 through 26 projected. All of the funds are now obligated under these project categories, and they will be reported to the US Treasury the end of January for December 31. The remaining obligated funds must be expended no later than December 31, 2026. And I keep reminding everyone. Our next one, the highlighted expenses for the Corporate Fund. This shows the emphasis of our ongoing expenses and, so went to the wrong one. The new firehouses, there was also three point eight million dollars that is included in the fiscal year 25 estimate. That money came from, funding from ARPA. It is an expense in the Corporate Fund, and there is ARPA revenue offsetting that, and that was for three point eight million. The firehouses, the total is, as of today, is twenty-three million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars in total. And so you will see that there was ten million that we also had bonds for. We did bonds during fiscal year 25 to offset, and that is proceeds revenue to the Corporate Fund. And that offset some of the cost of the firehouses as well, to the fund balance. I don't know if anyone has any questions on any of those lines while we're on that chart.
Anybody have any questions on this side of the slide in particular? Please proceed.
Okay. Now we're going into Fire and Police Funding Estimates. So this chart is a projection tool used to illustrate the long-term path that property taxes no longer cover our funding. Property taxes have remained since, I believe, nineteen eighty-four at point nine three eight-five of the EAV. So the blue part of the chart shows the property taxes that we are levying this fiscal year 26. It's twenty-six million dollars that is being levied. And the red shows the increase of the pension funding as projected by the actuary over the term of 25, fiscal year 25 through fiscal year 41, or calendar year 2040, in which state statute currently has the requirement of ninety percent funded by, or by calendar year 2040. Our next slide shows with our public safety pension funding, we've included that every penny of property tax equals two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. So this year, our 26 EAV estimate of twenty-six million dollars, which is our current levy at our point nine three eight-five of EAV, on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, that is about four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents of taxes. Ten point six percent of your tax assessment is received by the city as revenue. The other pieces go to other entities such as the Park District, District 186, and... I don't even remember all of the categories. So the current Corporate Fund shortfall for the pension funding is currently at five point four million. And to make up that five point four million, we would need another nineteen, almost nineteen and a half cents, which would be ninety-seven dollars and forty-seven cents more on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. So the total pension spending is at thirty-one million, four hundred thousand dollars.
Mrs. Metzger, can I remind you to put the mic right up, I just got to notify.
See, I think I'm talking loud.
Thank you.
So there is currently pension legislation where there's discussions about Tier One and Tier Two, and that is doing some adjustments to Tier Two to enrich those benefits to the Tier One benefits. But that is at the state legislature, nothing has moved, nothing has passed. If that were to pass, we would need another four million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which in property tax dollars, that would be another rate, an increased rate of seventeen cents.
Per year?
Per year, seventeen cents for the rate, right. Our next fund, or, I mean, sorry, our next slide is the Pension Funds, and it shows the audited history through fiscal year 24. And the yellow is the total amount of expenses that the Police Pension Fund is incurring, or has incurred. And the green shows the assets. So our fund assets for the Police Pension Fund are almost at two hundred and fourteen million dollars. Our next slide shows the Fire Assets, and those are at a hundred and seventy-five point six million dollars. And it's the same where the yellow is the expenses that are audited, the audited expenses through 24, and the green is the pension assets. Our next slide shows our Corporate Fund Profit and Loss Statement. And it is representative of how this budget has been built, and the revenue is conservative, and our expenses are aggressive. I know it's very hard to see, it's even hard for me to see.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, Director, this, this budget also includes the hole that we were on the, on the grocery tax, right?
Slide.
Yes, the grocery tax is included as a reduction of the taxes in the local economy.
All right. Jumped, see, I didn't jump ahead, that's why I didn't know.
Then the next slide is part of that, but are we ready to go to the next slide?
Alderman Williams.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, Director, on this profit and loss, does this show any additions of people or new initiatives, you know, pertaining to this fund?
Yes, this is the Corporate Fund, the, the new initiatives, I mean, each Department will talk about that. The headcount that we saw for the Corporate Fund on one of the earlier slides, that headcount is, is included within this profit and loss statement. And there is also one fire truck, an ambulance, and seven, six police cars.
Okay.
There's really not any other new initiatives that are included.
Well, yeah, I was just trying to figure out the wiggle room, you know, trying to figure out the wiggle room against any existing type of revenue stream. So I think if we, if I understood that a little more, I will be able to see if there's any wiggle room, you know?
And all, yep, and the Departments will be presenting that.
Yeah, I got to do it by the, okay, I thought I could cheat, but, okay.
And you'll see that the fund balance projected for fiscal year 26 is at twenty-five point six percent, and that is taking us back to where we were pre-COVID and pre-ARPA.
So what is the, what is the usage, fund usage for?
This fund?
Yeah.
This is the Corporate Fund, this is...
The fund balance usage?
The fund balance usage is almost twelve million dollars.
Twelve, okay.
So. Alderman Williams, are you done?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Alderman Hanauer.
So on the bottom, the percent of expenditures, is that, is that the fund balance?
Yes, it is.
So we're looking at, after projected, in 2027, we're at fifteen point two, and then, is that a typo?
That's fiscal year 27, yeah, two point two.
But 28 is two point two?
Yes, yeah, that's twenty.
And I'm glad I'm going to be off to council then, you guys have a good time with that one.
Last year, if you look at last year's P and L, you will see that that was forecast to be negative four percent?
Yeah, I remember way back.
Yeah, and 26 was also forecast as negative last year, and it's now at fifteen point two percent.
Mrs. Metzger, if I can, what, what was the projected fund balance for this fiscal year at the beginning, like a year ago? What was it? You said it earlier, it was like thirty-some percent?
Twenty twenty-five?
Twenty-three percent.
Twenty-three, and it's, it's...
Twenty-three percent, yes.
Or ending higher?
Yes, we are.
Because of deferred expenses, that's what you said earlier, okay, thank you. Alderman Gregory?
Yes, Ms. Ramona, does this include an extra pension payment? Our rules, if we end at twenty-five point six, we'll, we'll be making a...
This shows that it only has the cannabis extra payments budgeted right now.
But I know per code, when we're over...
That line is there. For Fire, the twenty percent extra balance.
Okay, I just didn't see it in, okay.
Yeah, the amount's not there.
Okay. So you can circle back with me, we sort of forecast that in there.
Anything else, Alderman?
No sir, thank you.
This slide shows the revenue difference with no grocery tax. With the loss of grocery tax that goes into effect at the end of this year, so January of 26, the loss of the grocery tax has an effect of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars on this year's budget, because it's January and February, and then projected 27, a four point two million, and fiscal year 28, at almost four point three million dollars in losses of grocery tax. Do we have any other questions on this part? No?
Alderman Gregory?
Just overall, and I guess this will go off of Alderman Hanauer, just looking at our future of where we're at now and where we could be going from your projections, we definitely are going to be 27, very, very close to that twelve percent warranty line, and, and, and 2028, if it stays that way, with an average growth of what, two to four percent, we'll still be short six to six percent or so. So, so does that mean, is that warning us that we need to tighten it up a little bit and, and, and bring it down a little bit?
We are very aggressive and with the expenses and conservative with those revenues. So we are basing it off of trends and percentage increases.
No, I appreciate that, I appreciate that, okay, thank you, I just wanted to wrap my head around it, thank you.
Mrs. Metzger, what was the, on the revenue side of the equation, what is the projected increase in sales tax and so forth, the main revenues from the Corporate Fund as far as this budget's concerned? Is it two percent, one percent, three percent, what'd you include?
Point five? No, two point two-five million is what Jeff is saying, was the increase.
What percentage is that? And if you need to do math, you can tell me in a little bit, I don't mean to put you on the spot like that, but it's important with the...
It's two percent for home rule and level for state sales tax.
Could you repeat that? Could you repeat that for the microphone?
2% for home rule and level for state tax.
So, very conservative. Hey, oh, I see we have a few of my colleagues that would like to say a few words. Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you, Chair. So, thank you, Ms. Ramona. I said it last year, I was feeling like we were kind of looking a little broke. But when you look at FY '28, it's just still not sitting right with me. So 2.2%. Looking at all of the revenue balances that's all over the board, it just seems like it won't be sustainable for the future year. So I know Alderman Gregory just somewhat asked the question that I wanted to ask, how do you feel this will impact the fund balances?
So that's a hard question, because I do not have that crystal ball. We do have the sports park, and the increases in the sports park, we've been very conservative on that as well.
So I guess too, you all know I always ask, not just during budget season, for kind of somewhat of an update. And because we can't really have a, what'd you say, a crystal ball? At some point in time, as you start to see some of those trends change, can you just shoot us a little bit of an update to say, hey, this is where we're at? When you see it dropping from 25.6% in FY '26 to 15.2 in '27, from 15.2 to 2.2 in '28? And like Ralph just said, he's going to be off at that time.
Thankfully.
Got to control him and tell him.
And in comparison to last year, that is an improvement.
Well, I, remember, I said it last year when, when you were up speaking. So I'm just making sure I, I reiterate that again this upcoming year, as you see some trends change, just to send information to us to say, hey, from budget time, this is what you all saw, but this is where we're at now. Thank you.
Will do. So, oh, is there any more questions?
Yeah, there's more questions, but go ahead with what you were going to say, please.
No, I was, I was going to move on to the electronic document, so.
Okay. Alderwoman Carlson.
Thank you, thank you, Ramona and your team. I have a question about the, back to the ARPA expenditure by department. And I know, you know, the dynamic, you know, I think it was a couple of years ago, I think the federal government was going to obviously start clawing some of this money back if we didn't either obligate it or spend it. I mean, my concern from day one was, you know, having this money not go really in, into the pipeline, into the day-to-day expenses, it's sort of, hey, it's newfound money, let's, whether it's programs or, or what have you. And I think we've done, obviously you've done a good job of that. My question with that is salary support.
Um, that was under the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And that, the fiscal year '23, there was $400,000 that was allocated back to salaries, which is a valid use of the funds.
Right.
And for fiscal year '25, there's $322,000 that was also allocated to salaries. There was a, Convention and Visitors Bureau took a huge loss during COVID.
That's right.
And the recovery was slow. And that was the best use of those funds. It was a pot of money that was given to SCV B to utilize.
Okay, I got, I understand, I mean, did we hire a couple of new people, or it was just get to, to get back, to get back to, to love the playing field?
To get it back to level, yes, back to covered losses from COVID period.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Alderman, Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you so much to everyone on your team for bringing these numbers forward. You've already kind of hinted at one of my first questions, which was exactly how conservative were you with the sports park? Because that, did you, did you factor in hotel? And I know, obviously, there are special conditions within that district, but I mean, I think the hope and the expectation is that people will be staying in hotels. I'm hoping Alderman Williams Ward will be, will be hopping. So how, did you factor in increases outside of that special area for hotel taxes and for sales tax?
Yes, we did, and do you have that?
Because that's a big investment in the community that I'm hoping.
And we do, we do have that. Can I share that on Thursday?
That's fine, yeah, that's, I just, I just wanted to kind of get that bug in your ear because I, I assumed you probably were very conservative and didn't include the sports park too much, because we haven't seen it yet, but thanks, I wanted to know that, and then I took my glasses off. And then we, we, another issue that we've dealt with over the years has been recouping sales tax from online sales. And I was just wondering how that process is going, do you, are we seeing an increase in that?
So the online sales, that's coming, it all goes through the state, and then we get our allocated share, and then our home, our home rule piece. We have, where we can go and look at sales, there's one person in the department, they can go out to Department of Revenue and actually look at different SIC codes and see the amount of sales tax that is being generated.
Okay.
By specific places. We are seeing an increase since we received the online taxes. I believe this year, we were up a million and a half? We're up a million and a half right now.
Okay. And that's, that's probably, okay, thank you, I was wondering, because I know that was, that was a big hole for us for a while, so certainly appreciate those changes at state level, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Rockford.
Yes, Director Metzger, under your ARPA expenditures by department, you've got a system upgrades for our water department, our water fund?
Um, you'll see that, it's in the very middle of the slide, water fund, it's a single line, it says the system upgrades. The total is at $5.1 million.
Okay, my, my question is, is that with the, with the rate increases at the water department that we put in for the water department, is that something we can get back? I mean, you know, I know.
It would be too late to do that now. Where, you mean where we would change?
Well, you know.
The use of the funding?
No, to, to, to get recouped, to get reimbursed from the, since they're, they're getting their tax revenues in, and we'll know more when they present their budget. So my question is, is any of that money, can we recoup any of that money from the water fund?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman, Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I guess, looking at this and looking at the way we're forecasting, I mean, we, we've got to really kind of watch ourselves up here with any, anything, any new stuff. Because this year, we got $650,000 that's, we're going to be affected by that grocery tax, but next year's a 4.2. What's, what percentage is, what's our, what's fund balance percentage would that be? Ramona, would that, would that be about 3, 3%?
2.3%.
So we're looking, that's a pretty, that's a pretty big drop immediately. And so if, we might as well start, you know, think about that going forward. And then, I mean, because that's, that's money we're not going to give back, so that, and there's nothing we can do about it, we just, we're just going to bite the bullet and figure out where we're cutting on, on that. But we might want to really start thinking about it this year, because if we add any new programs this year that goes into next year, there's going to have to be some cuts somewhere, so we got to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Alderman Gregory.
Yes, real, real quick, Ms. Ms. Metzger, I'm going to try to say your last name, Ms. Metzger, um, what, can you, can you talk to me a little bit about the, the difference in the, with no grocery tax, 650 to 4 million?
Okay, so the 650,000, it goes into effect January 1st.
Okay.
And the fiscal year is through February 28th. So that's two months' loss of grocery during fiscal year '26.
Okay. And then the information that Alderwoman was, Conley was asking about, about the sports complex and, and the hope tax revenue that we get from it, what, what, what would we need to be with that tax-wise to, to get us to 12% in 2028?
12%?
Yeah, just, just a bit, make it.
How about we get that for you on Thursday?
Thank you, I appreciate you, I'm sorry, thank you.
That's okay, thank you.
Anything else, Alderman Gregory?
No.
Alderman Williams.
Yes, Director, so earlier, we, we talked about the fund balance usage, and you answered 12 million. Is that like a, a projection, or, or is this something that we would use to balance the operating budget?
That balances the operating budget.
That, oh, it does?
Yes, it does.
Isn't that like a red flag, a big red flag, yeah?
Done it for years.
Yeah.
What, so, so it happened last year's, what'd you say, Ralph?
Happened the last, since I've been on, we've gone into fund balance.
So that 12 million will be the budget to balance the operations budget?
So last year, we were projected in the '25 budget, let me go back to that. In the '25 budget, we actually projected 16.9, 16,900,000 of fund balance usage. And our estimate for '25 is actually coming in just under 2 million of usage.
Thank you, Director.
Director, isn't it, isn't it, if I recall, let me start over. Isn't it true that GFOA, Government Financial Office Association, recommends a range, I don't remember the, the range, but if it's closer to 30%, I'm talking about fund balance, it's a high fund balance.
Yes.
Closer to 10%, we're going to have trouble paying the bill. So obviously, the proposed budget says 25.6. Looking at the old numbers, it was 32.7 the year before, 22.3 the year before that. Then next year, you projected, and I know these numbers will change, it's not set in stone, 15.2, and we said that the year after that, FY '28, it's 2.2. Obviously, that's alarming, that's an alarming trend, you're absolutely right, Alderwoman. So, you know, I know this isn't the last of it, but we're going to have to do some, obviously some, make some changes, cuts, or what have you, so anyway. Anyone else have a question? Alderman Williams.
No, thank you.
Anyone else have a question of the director while she's there and her team?
So I want to point out that we have an electronic document on our website. It is posted on the city's website under Open Government, and it should be posted on the clerk's website as well, under budgets. And Courtney is going to do a quick walkthrough of how to maneuver through the electronic document. It's a ream of paper, if it's printed. It's not intended to be printed, there's not an index, because we use bookmarks, it's set up as an electronic document. So she's going to do a quick walkthrough for anyone, just so that you can easily go through it.
Can we get the next presentation?
You could please introduce yourself, that would be wonderful.
Sure, my name's Courtney Heinzel, I'm a budget analyst here in the Office of Budget and Management. And we are presenting this in response to some feedback we've had, so get started. The full FY '26 proposed budget book has been compiled into one PDF document, as Ramona mentioned. Upon opening the PDF, the document can be navigated in the following ways. The traditional method, so you can scroll using the mouse or the, mouse wheel or the trackpad to go up and down through the pages, much like you would go through a paper document. You can use the next and previous arrows to click up and down to go through the document again, much like you would with a paper document. There is also a page number section at the top. All of those things are shown there in that little image. You can type in a page number and hit enter, and it'll take you right to the page that you want. And as you can see there, it looks like the document is 424 pages, so that is why we are using an electronic version. And another method of navigating it is using the find function. You can search for keyword by clicking on the magnifying glass, as shown in that image there. It's in the page navigation toolbar at the top of the page. This will open a search box. Control F will also pull up the search box. You enter your word or your phrase into the search box and hit enter or next to see all instances of that word or phrase within the entire document. You can then use next and previous buttons to navigate between instances of that word or phrase. Another method of navigating your PDF is using thumbnails. If you'll click once on the icon in the upper left of your PDF, that looks like two pieces of paper, this is the page thumbnails icon. It will open a page thumbnails panel on the left side, which shows a very tiny image of each page. You can scroll through those thumbnails to view the full image of the selected thumbnail, simply click on it once, and the full image will be displayed to the right. You may close the thumbnails panel by clicking on the X that appears in that panel at the top, next to the words page thumbnails. This is helpful if you need to expand the view of the page currently being reviewed. Another method of navigating it is using bookmarks. If you click once on the icon in the upper left of your PDF that looks like a ribbon, that's the bookmarks icon, it will open a bookmarks panel on the left side, which shows nested bookmarks denoting the various sections of the budget book. Because the bookmarks are nested, they function like a traditional outline. The main bookmarks will have more detailed bookmarks nested within them. To expand your bookmarks to see what's nested in each section, click the carrot or the arrow next to the bookmark. To navigate to the selected bookmark, click once on the bookmark name, the full image will be displayed next to the bookmark panel. A right-facing arrow next to your bookmark name means that the bookmark has additional bookmarks nested within it. A down-facing arrow means you have already expanded this bookmark to view everything at that next level. No arrow means there are no bookmarks nested within that bookmark. Troubleshooting, sometimes none of this seems obvious when you open up your PDF. So if you do not see the tools mentioned as part of the page navigation toolbar, make sure your tools aren't hidden. Follow these instructions shown there, you're going to go to View, Show/Hide, Toolbar Items, Show Page Navigation Tools, select the tools you want displayed. So there's an image there showing just how you get to that section. Another issue you may have is scrolling issues. They can be corrected by going to the View and Page Display. Make sure Enable Scrolling is checked. And again, there's an image showing just how to get to that area. Again, another issue you may have is if you don't see the page thumbnails or the bookmarks icon that we mentioned. You may need to expand your side menu first by clicking once on the right pointing arrow shown there in the image on the far left side of your PDF. It will then become a left pointing arrow and reveal the tools on the left side. All right, you can locate the FY '26 electronic budget book on the city website via that URL there. To navigate directly to that from the main city homepage, which is Springfield-il.us, you just expand the Your Government menu and then click on Open Governments. And I just want to say, because I don't know if it was mentioned, preparing the city budget is of course a team effort, but I want to make sure we recognize Dallas Whitford, who I believe is watching from home. For everything he's done as part of that team, Dallas is a former employee of OBM and is currently working for us contractually. His tireless devotion, his amazing depth and breadth of knowledge, and his eagerness to help and to teach are priceless and precious assets for which we are eternally grateful. And I am pleased to be able to learn from him.
Thank you for that explanation, and kudos to Big D as well. Anybody have a questions regarding the navigating the budget book? Bottom line is, if you have questions and get into a jam, please call the Office of Budget Management, and I'm sure they'll be happy to help. Anything else, ladies and gentlemen? Okay, why don't we move right along, the next up is the mayor's office. Give the, give the clerk's office a couple of minutes, and we'll move forward. Thank you.
That's good, thank you.
Here it comes. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, Mr. Disco, are you ready to proceed?
Sure.
Please.
Okay, I'm Mike Disco, Chief of Staff for the Mayor. With me is Greg Mordock, Corporate Counsel, Ethan Posey, Communications, Community Relations, and then Haley Wilson is out sick tonight, so I'm gonna represent her in Communications. So to begin, this is just our department structure, going through the Office of the Mayor. And then we have Mayor, Administration, Chief of Staff, which is me. I take care of the Boards and Commission. The only thing we're doing different on that is we're adding seven thousand dollars to the Senior Citizens Building for replacement of the gutters. And then we have Communications, Community Relations, and Corporate Counsel.
Thank you, Members of Council. Just a brief overview of the structure of the Office of Corporation Counsel. We have three divisions, we have a General Practice Division, we have a Code Enforcement Division, and then our Business Licensing Division. Our General Practice Division is my office, or when you come to my office, it's that section of the city. We handle the ordinances and litigation cases. So this year, we prepared over five hundred ordinances, we have forty-eight pending state and federal matters that doesn't include small claims, those are law or law magistrate cases. We had thirty-four new risk management cases. One of the things that we do is we operate our self-insurance fund through my office, so we've had thirty-four claims opened this year and we have one hundred ongoing workers' compensation cases that we are handling. The Code Enforcement side division of our office filed seven hundred and thirty-seven administrative court cases this year, which is on par with what they did last year. We finished fifty demolition cases, we opened, just this year, we opened up forty-one new, we have forty-one pending demolition cases. Just for the Council's reference, that's this year. So, total right now, there are a hundred and forty-two outstanding demolition cases. We have seventy-eight demolition orders. Seventy-five of those come from twenty-twenty-one through the present date, we have three older than twenty-twenty-one that we're working through. We have four agreements to repair those cases. In twenty-twenty-three, we had fifteen owner repaired homes. In twenty-twenty-four, we had sixteen owner repaired homes that were on the demo list. In twenty-twenty-three, we had nineteen owner demolitions, in twenty-twenty-four, we had fifteen owner demolitions. We have, of our pending demolitions, we've filed twenty-five in Circuit Court recently. We have thirty-five yet to be filed, so the Council's aware, the way we handle demolition cases is we do them on a quarterly basis, so we prepare the complaints, but then we obtain the title work and file the, and file the cases on a quarterly basis in bulk. It's a more efficient way for our office to operate. Total pending MR cases, MR are enforcement cases, so if we have an order by our administrative court to repair and individuals are not repairing their homes, we can file MR cases. We are at five hundred and twenty-five this year, that represents a significant increase. We're up from two hundred and sixty-three that were filed last year. Small claims, again, we were able to increase those, we're at three hundred and thirty-two, up from two hundred and eighty-nine last year. Our Business Licensing Department, liquor fees are on par with what they were last year, same with taxes. Video gaming, you'll notice it's about a hundred thousand dollars less than last year. We anticipate about that number of licensing fees to come in. The reason for the difference is there are two weeks remaining to apply for a new license, they expire at the end of January, so we are talking with businesses, but we have not had a decline in terminals or a decline in businesses offering video gaming, so we expect those license fees to be coming in over the next two weeks. So we provided for the total, this total used to include vehicle use tax collected through OBM. That process is entirely handled by OBM, so we moved that away from this slide to better reflect the work that our office is doing. There's no new budgetary funding initiatives for this year. The only increases are in personnel costs. That just reflects an increase in what we expect cost of living, we have no new headcount. We were able to hire and retain several new attorneys because of this Council's support and so we anticipate them continuing and that's a reason why you're starting to see more MR cases filed and more small claims cases filed, it's because we have a Code Enforcement Office that's fully staffed. We've got three attorneys working and a paralegal who's barred in Pennsylvania, who's sitting for the bar in a month. So we are able to attack some of the backlog that we've had, where we've had administrative court cases that haven't been moving in Circuit Court. So we look forward to continue to pushing those through Circuit Court. That's the only major increase. You will see a minor increase in the subscription and information costs. We have subscriptions to Lexis and Amicus, those contracts are coming up. Amicus is our case management system, Lexis is our research system, so there's a minor increase there. And then an increase in the licensing fees for us to maintain our professional licenses because we finally do have a fully staffed attorneys, we needed to increase that to cover the additional due. That's all I have, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions of Mr. Mordock? Alderman Williams.
Yes, on the demos, is that broken down by Ward? Like, do you have a list broken down by Ward of the cases? Or can you get that?
I don't have it presently today, I can absolutely get that for you.
Please, please, give me Ward three, I appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Alderman Gregory?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Mordock, have we got any more information on our trash billing on CWLP for those who may be deemed to not keep trash? Have we worked that process out with CWLP through your office?
I know last time I spoke with CWLP, they, we worked through that process, but I would need to talk with them and I can brief you on that.
Okay, thank you. My final question, on the, sorry, let me get back to my page. At the start of the cannabis regulation back in twenty-nineteen, I know we was doing some expungements, are all of those done through your office?
So we had a brief period where we didn't have a police advisor, so we did get a backlog. Michael, our new police attorney, has been working through those and I believe those are done or close to done. There might be a couple languishing, but I think he's got through them, but I will confirm and I will let you know.
Okay, I appreciate you. My last question is just a comment, that's good info on the, how we doing our demos every quarter and I would assume that's a change that you made recently within your office, or have we always done it like that?
That was an initiative that Katia has been, that she put together and, yeah, so I would give her credit for that.
No, no, thank you, I appreciate it and I think that's good information for all of us to know, so therefore we know how to relay that to our constituents as well, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. Mr. Mordock, I appreciate the fact that you guys are starting to enforce, you're ramping up enforcement. I would like to see more enforcement on the sixty-forty rule on the gaming. It's my understanding from what people tell me that there are a lot of abusers on that. Though, the one thing I think we need to look at is maybe somehow changing it to, because right now, they go a year and then we enforce it, but then they get another year, so basically, they get two years, they don't have to follow our rules and then they go and they'll start somewhere else. I think that we need to look at maybe lowering those timeframes and, you know, at least after a year, go nine months and then three months so that, you know, once it's done, it's done, if they can't show that they're doing it. And then, I want to make sure that we start attacking, it's not anything now, but the grass, you know, on these, we got a lot of, you know, we all, in the spring, we're all gonna be up here going crazy because, and it's all gonna be the same repeat offenders that probably have tall grass from when we stopped mowing and they'll have tall grass in the spring and that's just gonna, it's gonna be worse. And I don't think, I still don't think in the spring, we start finding them, they shouldn't get a warning because everybody knows the grass needs cut. It's not hard, especially these fields. And so, I think it's something that we need to look at, but I'm glad to hear that we're full staffed at enforcement and we need to look at that, so, thank you.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Chair. And Alderman Hanauer brought up an issue that I was gonna ask about too. If we could get more regular reports on the facilities that have been inspected for their video gaming and the pass fail kind of rate. I agree, I actually, recently, and I thank you for bringing that up because I had forgotten it and then brought it back, but I've had people ask, you know, given how very many gaming outlets we have in Springfield and it's, that's another conversation, but given how many we have, you know, how are we ensuring that we're getting all the dollars that we should from those and how closely are we regulating them? So I think it's something that we really need to be very, more in touch with those and they need to be looked at more closely. And I would, I think as a Council as a whole, we would need to see, I'd like to see, if not quarterly, at least a, you know, maybe every six months, a report on where we are with those investigations. And I will just say, although we'll probably get into this, we do want to remember that mowing very early in the spring, Alderman Hanauer, is somewhat of a threat to the insects, the little guys that are under those grasses and leaves in the beginning of spring, so, let them have a little bit of time. I know you're shaking your head, I can't even see you, I can feel it. Thank you.
I'll let Alderman Hanauer handle the insects, but we will be sure to get you a report.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Anything else, Alderwoman?
No, thank you, Chair.
Mr. Disco, Communications.
Okay, for Haley's Department, artistic budget reduction, reduce the professional and artistic budget line by designing all marketing and promotional materials in-house through various programs. And the return of the High School Holiday Program, the city of Springfield collaborated with District 186 to reinstate the High School Holiday Program. And then the Return of the Holiday Planner Contest, the Mayor's Office and Public Works collaborated together to bring back the Holiday Planner Contest in an effort to create community pride and beautify the downtown area for the holidays. And then we started the inaugural Veterans Resource Fair this fall. That's all we have for her.
Any questions to Mr. Disco on the Communications Department? Okay. Mr. Posey, you're up.
Wonderful, thank you, Alderman. Just a list of accomplishments for Community Relations this year. Want to start off with our Build Springfield event, which was a bit expanded this year. We had two weeks of a forty-block radius cleanup in Ward Two in the month of June, a two-week cleanup of a forty-block radius in Ward Three in July, and our Splash event in October, which featured over thirty community partners and organizations and we were able to feed over three hundred people free of cost in the community, so I feel like that was a very big win. The relocation at Old Town, we were able to collaborate with different organizations and the Heartland Continuum of Care to relocate all of those residents from Old Town without any cost to the city and the taxpayers. SPS 186 collaboration, we participated in multiple events, including speaking to elementary schoolers about your local government, the importance and how it works, mentoring at-risk students, working with the Alternative to Assets program that Erica Austin runs with the NAACP and students from Douglas as well as from Springfield Learning Academy. Also, our homeless outreach team, we received a lot of feedback throughout the year of, you know, how we were operating and so we took that time to sit and make some adjustments in how we are interacting with our unhoused community, putting together our team, having better communication between ourselves and other agencies and how we utilize that team moving forward. And I felt like that was a large area of growth that we had this year, thank you. Any questions?
Any questions of Mr. Posey, Alderman Gregory?
On the Build Springfield program, do we, have we identified where we're thinking about having that next year?
We have not, we are putting together a team this year of people who have worked on the Build Springfield program over the last three years to take a look at what things we've done well, what things we can do better, what things we can do more cost effectively. And then I'll be happy to take whatever suggestions that I can get for the location for next year so we can sit and weigh it out and show those options to the Mayor and see where she would like to have the program, where it would be most effective in the city. I think that's the biggest portion of what we want to do is figure out where for the next year can we make the largest impact based on, you know, different numbers that we're seeing or just where the people would most desire to have it.
Are you, do you plan on incorporating information for Public Works in our police department and as far as where we get the most police calls and where we get the most of that information? Okay, good, good. How is my First Home Initiative progressing?
So what we're doing is, I'm sure you guys have looked at the budget, we're going to be rolling that over into next year, as you've heard me come up here and say a lot of times, yesterday's price is not today's price. So it took us until November to be able to get a general contractor price low enough to actually fit within our budget and we were able to get a minority contractor who made it fit and came down on his initial bid. We didn't actually get any bids on the project when we put it out for bid. So between breaking it down into general contracting, HVAC, plumbing, and electric, it was not easy to find contractors to do the work on single-family residential homes, especially on the east side for only a certain amount of money. But we are at the point now where we have bids on all of those contracts and we're rolling it over into this FY twenty-six budget, so that way we'll actually be able to get the work done and then pay out once the work is done.
Okay, all right, and last question, I think we talked a little bit about this before, our minority numbers, will you be able to get with Mr. Lesko and give us a good picture when he has his presentation of what that is? And if we can break it down in our projects and what we contract out, but as far as our local minority numbers. For instance, I, sorry, talked to Chris Richmond at Pillsbury and I just sort of asked him where his minority numbers were and one of the things that is good, but it sort of bothers me a little bit is, you know, one of the contractors that went from Springfield, and that's really not our goal. We want to try to get minority contractors from Springfield minorities involved on all fixed and unfixed projects, so I appreciate you.
I can give a purchasing agent, Lesko, and see what mechanisms we have to pull all the different data that we can and I'm sure we can present that to you.
I appreciate you, sir, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Feel free to come back to Bunfield and do that Build Springfield again, I think it was a success. I know Sean wants to move it further south, but, you know, if we can keep it there, that'd be great. I got some demos out and I got some great things that were needed. But I want to back up before the group leaves, Mr. Chair, if I could. Corporate Counsel, well, let me ask this first, are we doing any version of putting trash on the electric bill right now? Like for chronic people or anything like that?
I know we talked about it and we've done it in the past, I would need to get, I would need to talk with CWLP to see what they're currently, I know it was not widely utilized, so I'd need to talk with CWLP to see when and how.
Okay, and then in your mind, are there any legal issues with putting people's trash pickup on the electric bill legally?
Well, my concern would be with due process. Now, our ordinance specifies that they need to not have it, we give them a hearing process, so I think we could address the due process. What I would not want to do is just, if there's a pile of trash or we find that there's no service there to just immediately put it on there. We would need to give them notice of what's going to happen and an opportunity to be heard. But if we do that, I think that legally, under our ordinances, we're allowed to do it.
I appreciate you and I wish your staff would really spend some time on this because my experience is, when we get into this and we're talking trash, everybody is not the same. You see all that trash out there, but it's out there for different reasons because the least... You see all that trash out there, but it's out there for different reasons, because the leases read different things. Some, some leases read, well, it's the responsibility of the owner, and the owner's in Florida, that type of thing. So the renter is sitting there going, well, I'm not, it's not in my lease to, you know. So it's a little more complicated, I think, sometimes than a shoe and then other citizens think. But we need to spend some time in this area and make up our minds, because since I've been on this council, this ideal of putting it on the electric bill has been discussed a few times. But I think the reason why we don't get a lot of movement or anything generated is because of the complexities of the issues, which leads us all the way back to what we won't do as a council, which is hold landlords or home, I'll say landowners accountable, we just won't do it in Springfield. Therefore, we generate all these other issues that involve trash pickup, to include trash pickup, I'll say. So, I know I said a lot, but I hope you take those thoughts in consideration, and hopefully we can get some movement this budget year. Thank you.
Thank you Alderman, Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you Chair. Corporation Council, I guess I, I would say I take responsibility for not following up, because I thought this was put on the bill from several months ago when we brought our recap forward and talked about it, and I think Doug came up and said that we could do it because it was already in the ordinance and it had been done in the past.
Right, so I, I need to see how it's being implemented, and, and, because I know we had internal discussions as that group, but, but I also know that it has not been widely utilized or that it's happening every time. So I, I do need to follow up with that, and I will do that, and I will let the council know where we are at with that and where we can go with that.
Thank you, and then once it does take effect, can we have like an example of what it'll look like for somebody on their bill too?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you Alderwoman, Mr. Disco.
Okay, on our workforce, we're increasing from one person from 28 to 29. And our budget, operating line is $995,000, personal services $3.4 million. And our budget, uh, personal services went up 10.87, and then our equipment went up 60,000, that's for Haley to continue doing the stuff, we're here for the AV department.
Is that corporate fund money, or I mean, uh, is that PEG money or corporate, otherwise? If you could just find out.
For the equipment?
The equipment. If you could just let us know, that would be fine, doesn't have to be right now, but thank you. I have to ask or we forget.
Then the Office of Mayor represents 2% of the corporate fund. The Office of the Mayor will see an increase in expenses of $337,000, which is 8.32. This is due to cost of living expenses and one extra employee, and then our headcount will go from 28 to 29. Questions?
Alderman Williams, are you still up from before?
Um, I'm through.
Any other questions, Alderman Carlson.
Thank you Chair. Mike, the, uh, that last line, Community Rela, Community Relations, maybe this is for the Eagles fan, is adding a community care services specialist to aid with the unhoused. Is that going to be a street person out or in the office, or what's the dynamic there?
Yes, this will, this will be us adding another qualified mental health professional to our outreach team to be on the street, actually working and interacting with members of our unhoused community in an effort to reduce the amount of law enforcement interactions that we have to have between our city and our unhoused community and increase the number of qualified mental health professionals.
Thank you, thank you Chair.
Thank you, Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, um, so for that position, what kind of hours are you anticipating for them? Will they be regular kind of office hours? Because I, I know a lot of these issues come up after 5:00. So is there flexibility in that, or?
Um, I anticipate there will be some flexibility, but they will be operating very much full-time in the community. As many of you know, there are problems that pop up constantly, or new areas where encampments have been, you know, started, and our plan is to go out and make, you know, contact with the individuals who are there and offer them services, get to know them and see what they need. Then in order to do that effectively, we have to have a qualified mental health professional, so that way they know the appropriate responses to give to individuals who are there. But this is somebody who will be on the street, they will have an office housed in my building, so if there is a, a day where we have less traffic actually on the street, they can be there inputting information into the HMIS system or another system that we may be able to create using City Works that we've went and we've gone and we've talked to some of our individuals there about. But this is an effort to cover some of the gaps in service and the feedback that we've gotten over the past six months to a year about what we can do to build better relationships with our unhoused community.
Okay, I, I, thank you for that. I, I will just, two things from what you said. First of all, I do think we need to consider that there needs to be flexibility in their hours so that we have someone available in evening hours too. And then secondly, I would be, I would be very bothered if we create a new system when our social service providers are all using that HMIS. I think, as, I, I appreciate you adding this position, I think it's a good addition to the city, but we also want to make sure that what we're adding is something who's, they're gathering information and they're feeding in and working with that larger network of our social service providers who are also those frontline providers for these services.
Right, just to be sure that I'm not misspeaking, by a new system, I don't mean it will do anything to displace the HMIS system, I mean a system of personal accountability where we can track what we are doing from a community relations standpoint and from our outreach team and provide quarterly those numbers to the city council and say, these are, this is what we're doing from a city side of our employees to try and make contributions and cover some of the gaps in service. It will in no way overshadow or displace anything that's already in place. It would just be simply more for us to take more accountability and have a better understanding of exactly what our numbers are as a department.
And, and I understand that, but I, I just, I guess I want to caution that we don't have too much duplication of efforts, I mean, things that are being entered into HMIS feeds into our entire network, and that's, that's our whole community, you know, that greater community of our social service providers. And keeping that information consistent and updated is really critically important. But I also, and, and I appreciate you wanting accountability from your staff, that's, I mean, we want that with everything. I would just caution, maybe we don't want to have too much where, where this position turns into bean counting more than interacting with people. That's, that's really where our critical need is. And, and again, I'm not questioning, you know, I, I understand where you're going and that, that's a balance that we have to do, we're talking about city funds here. But I do just want to make sure if there's a way we can work with the existing HMIS and extract that information just for city purposes only, that would be great. And, and make, and ensure that this, this position is someone who has, you know, the overwhelming majority of their time out on the streets, developing those relationships, and, and making sure that we're also supporting our, our other social service providers.
Understood.
Thank you again for bringing this position, and I've, the, the outreach team is, is something that I've wanted to see us really build up, and, and I appreciate, let's, taking this, this, this initiative and, and moving this direction, so thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you Alderman Carlson.
Yeah, thank you Chair, and Alderwoman Conley, I couldn't agree with you more. I mean, we, in government, we do a great job of duplicating services, but if we've learned anything over the last four or five months from Josh Sable and other organizations who've come in here, what I've been hearing is we need more people on the street, and if this helps that from the city standpoint, then I'm all in favor of it, so, thank you.
Absolutely, I would say that is the, 100%, the main purpose of adding this position is to have qualified individuals that work for the city that are not representative of law enforcement or anywhere else that may have a badge that may cause some kind of unnecessary trauma just by an interaction there, to be able to reach out to our unhoused community and help get services they need and build better relationships.
Anything else Alderman? Any other questions of the Office of the Mayor by any of the council members? Thank you very much gentlemen, and next up is the Treasurer, three to five minutes, a little break. Well, three to five minutes. Clerk's office, are you ready? Treasurer, are you ready?
Yes Chair, thank you.
Please proceed, thank you.
Thank you Chair. Can you hear me okay?
No.
All the way up. Thank you Chair, and thank you to the mayor and the Alders for hearing our budget presentation tonight. Our office has the unique privilege to work with almost every city and CWLP department by receipting and dispersing funds as requested. We understand our office's responsibility to flow seamlessly in order to contribute to the city's overall efficiency. Our office takes pride in offering excellent service to the citizens. As the only office that balances city funds, our average, we are maintaining and balancing upwards of $30 million daily. We partner with local banks to ensure the security of city funds while maximize, while maximizing our rate of return, which you're going to see on later slides. Thank you. Our clicker's not working. Okay, the accomplishments for the Treasurer's office for FY 2025. In FY 24, we had payment options to pay parking tickets via credit card and e-check on our website, through a text message, at our office window, or dropping off a check in the drop boxes located in downtown Springfield. In FY 25, we worked with Crystal Trent and Public Works to get a QR code added to the parking ticket envelope for an added convenience. This was at the request of the citizens of Springfield. Our relationship with local banks allowed us to keep financial fees very low at $420 year-to-date. As you all know, Ordinance 3717 allows the Treasurer's office to check City of Springfield and CWLP for any debt before we allow payment to any vendor. Our office was able to recover $16,139.39 in 2024 for unpaid debt from outgoing payments in accordance with the Ordinance 3717. Our office collaborates with other city departments and our credit card vendor to create a simple online payment experience. This year, we worked with the city clerk's office to add 10 payment options. Links are sent directly to the citizens with all the information that they are needed for them personally, and that is included for an easy payment. This is what the new envelope looks like, that the parking tickets are going to be in from our Public Works employees, and I have the QR code there. The next slide is our goal slide, FY 2026 goals. We believe that there is an opportunity to reduce the courier fees for the upcoming fiscal year. We are working with our local banks to create a process for in-house deposits, which will also reduce the risk of fraud. As check fraud increases around the country, the Treasurer's office will continue to work with the City of Springfield and CWLP departments to increase the amount of ACH payments instead of checks that the city is issuing. This will ensure that our vendors are paid properly, promptly and securely, so no more waiting for checks in the mail. Our next slide is our interest earned for City of Springfield funds. As you can see, we are still moving in a positive direction with interest income. As of 12/31/24, we have earned roughly $5.3 million in returns on city funds. On the next slide, it shows CWLP electric funds. We've earned roughly $2.9 million for FY 2025. And then on the next slide, we And then on the next slide, we are, we have the C W P water funds, which shows that we have earned seven hundred and seventy two thousand so far. We are on track to, we are on track to, um, earn more interest than we did in F Y twenty five. So we're moving in a positive direction. Um, I want to take this time to say thank you to our local banks for understanding that this money directly impacts our community. And because of the great rates that they give us on our funds, we're able to put that back into our community. Um, it was predicted last year that, um, we would have roughly four rate drops. We didn't see those rate drops, um, throughout the year. We did have a couple of rate drops towards the end of the year. They were very, they were very small, which is what you're reflecting in these last three slides. I also don't have a crystal ball, so I don't know what next year will bring. But most of the articles that I've read said that there will be some, you know, slow drops, and we're going to hope for that. I know that the local banks are still going to work with us, make sure that we have great rates, um, honor returns, and, um, that we're going to move, uh, in a positive direction. Our workforce. Um, back in F Y two thousand and nineteen, you can see that the treasurer's office went from thirteen employees to twelve. Um, shortly after cutting that position, we went into COVID, which created a slower, um, than normal workload for our accounting side in the treasurer's office. The treasurer's office, um, has a, two different sides. There's a traffic side and the property side, and then the accounting side, which the accounting, um, employees are balancing our funds. Um, anything that electronically that's coming in, they're receipting that. Um, while this is a positive, um, over the last year, we have worked on converting, um, check payments to electronic payments. And while this is a positive change, the workload has increased for our department. For example, all of our State of Illinois payments for the City of Springfield and C W P have been converted over to electronic payments and are now processed by our employees in the treasurer's office. This could be up to a hundred and fifty or more transactions for us to process each day. Additionally, the added credit card payments that we added, um, for the clerk's office and for the other departments over the last couple of years have increased the number of receipts that our office is processing daily. Overall, these are all improvements for the treasurer's office and the city. Um, the added position that you will see in this budget presentation will help better serve the constituents and the other city departments and keep moving forward, um, with these positive advancements. Um, the next slide shows our overall budget. Our budget is pretty simple. We, um, are less than one percent. We didn't even have a color in Ramona's slide, so, um, uh, the biggest change you'll see is to the personnel, um, services line. Um, the breakdown of this variance, um, is the accountant two position, which we are, um, adding. Um, there was employee insurance, it was a, a big part of that. And then minor increases on this were the cola raises for the civil service employees, um, that are budgeted, or the negotiated, uh, union raises for the thirty seven, thirty eight employees. A slight increase to the intern rate, uh, which is a comparable rate to the other intern rates for the City of Springfield, because we were, um, quite low compared to the other city departments. And then retirement contributions, so that's what makes up that, um, variance. And then for the electronic data, data processing, um, there was an increase with our treasury desktop software, which is the, um, software that we use to, um, to, uh, uh, put all of our, um, but when we're booking the work and doing our transfers, um, every day. Uh, we will continue to, um, work hard on collections in our office. We will continue to work with the local banks to, um, hopefully make sure that we have those big, uh, increases to help, um, contribute to the city's, um, growth and move the city forward. Do you have any questions for us? Oh, my gosh, I forgot to introduce. This is, this is, uh, Deputy Treasurer Eric Ketchum, that is with me.
We know you, Eric.
Welcome. Alderwoman, purchase.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Madam Treasurer, would this be a question for you when you talked about on the ticket side? So, you know, people get their parking tickets. I know that I still see people feeding the meter, so what have we received? Would that be a question for you or P W Public Works with Crystal on what have we received year to date? Would people still paying the meters and that?
Yep, I can get you that number if, would you like it Thursday, is that fine?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That'll work for me. Thank you.
We, they are, um, people are still feeding the meter.
I see. I told him stop.
They are, and it's not our department that collects it, um, but Public Works is still collecting and.
Okay.
Working, yep, I'll get that.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, thank you Treasurer for, um, that presentation. And, and just a quick question, and I don't know if you do this or not, but with your relationships and, uh, with the banks that you grow, uh, is there any talk about the Community, uh, Reinvestment Act and, and how they can work with our, um, Economic Development Department to?
No, but I'm sure that they would be open to any kind of partnership. So we could, you know, get our bank, all of the local banks and send that out and see if that's something that they are, that they're interested in. I would be.
Thank you. Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Anything further, Alderman?
No, sir.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yes, ma'am, I just wanted to ask about the, um, the collections. Um, are, are we seeing an increase in percentage of, uh, that we're, we're, we're collecting and what's going? We're getting back from the collection agencies. Um, I just was, we, I worked on that a long time ago, and it, it, it's, I think it's turned out to be a good program for us.
So, um, we still have the, uh, private collection agency that we send everything through, and we also, um, send it to the State of Illinois. And, um, just for twenty twenty four, we've collected, uh, the treasurer's office collected roughly seventy eight thousand dollars.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anything further, Alderman?
No.
Alderman Gregory, do you have something else?
No, sir, I took it down.
Anyone else have a question of the treasurer or her staff?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is City Council Coordinator, Tim Griffin.
Quick.
We've been waiting for this one all night.
Not yet.
I don't even know if I'd sit down if I were you as fast as you are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There you go, I got, I got two of them.
More paper?
See if he keeps the record.
Thank you.
Mr. Griffin, the floor is yours.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, uh, as you know, as you saw in the sheet, smallest budget, we should take the smallest amount of time. We'll go through this quickly, uh, as normal. Uh, as you go through the sheets it provided to you there, the first sheet was what we used to call the green sheets. The green sheets, the personal services, as well as the eleven hundred series are all actually provided by O B M based on our, uh, employees, that, that part is all taken care of by O B M. Uh, there will be one minor change to eleven hundred series that will be, uh, done as a, uh, amendment. We all, that I spoke to all of you about, the reason being that change had taken place after the submission of the official budget. We didn't want to muddy the water, so that will take place, uh, as part of the amendment process. Uh, as we look at the twelve hundred series on the first page, there's no changes from any of the year before. Uh, as you look at the bottom part of the twelve hundred series, the twelve thirty one, which was operating licenses and tax, uh, fees, that did go up only fifty dollars due to the fact that it's time for, uh, renewal of the notary. Uh, Jeanette acts as a notary up here for the third floor. Uh, the twelve thirty two, though, to save the money, I went ahead and dropped by fifteen hundred dollars. That was a contractual services not, uh, not classified. We hadn't been using that, so I went ahead and, and made cuts where I could. Uh, same with the fourteen oh seven, the structural maintenance and fixtures. Uh, that was only at two hundred and fifty dollars, but I haven't been using it, so I dropped it to a hundred dollars to knock a little bit more off there. And same with the rental telephone services and equipment. We historically had stayed under two, even though there'd been three in that line. I went ahead and cut it down to two, fear that we would still stay within those, uh, parameters this year as well. Uh, as you look at the transportation per diem, et cetera, we don't, very rarely is that ever used or asked for, so I just left it at the, the thousand dollars that have always been in there for the last few years and hopes that if something does come up, we would have that money there to, to act, uh, if necessary. Uh, that is the only changes you have. I know it's your, your budget, so I know you have a pretty good idea of what happens and what doesn't happen in our office. Uh, if there's any questions tonight, I'd be happy to entertain them. If not, you know, you can contact me every day, most of you do anyway. So if you have any questions tonight, please let me know.
Alderman Gregory.
Uh, just real quick, uh, Tim, on page five, the, um, I M L conference, three sixty per, per registration, um, is, is that open to any of our, any of us council members? And, and how, how do we need to go about that process?
Just, you mean, holler, that's, very rarely has people done, what they've done in the past, uh, it's only been used by one or possibly two Aldermen historically that I'm aware of. And what they had done is they said if we would as a, as a, uh, agency pay for the entrance fee, they in turn did their own travel and stayed with someone or just got a hotel on their own.
Okay.
Count me in.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone else have a question, Mr. Griffin? Mr. Griffin, nice job. Thank you very much. Next up is the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau, Mr. Dahl and his team.
Scotty.
Thank you. Mr. Dahl, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Alderman, appreciate it. Good evening, uh, it seems like just yesterday I was here delivering my, uh, F nineteen, uh, budget, so times travel fast. Uh, to my right is Matthew Johnson, he's our newer fiscal officer. Matt's been doing a great job for us, so introduce him. Um, our department's structure. Our department's structure, uh, Tourism Division, that's our visitor center, that's us welcoming visitors to town. Our Sales Division, we sell the city, that's our team that sells the city conventions, meetings, group tours. Uh, our Services Division, that's our retention team, that's, we want repeat conventions, meetings, group tours, so that's our retention team. And our Marketing Division, the M team, uh, that's our destination, destination marketing efforts. Uh, that's our social media, uh, that's our advertisements that we put out worldwide. And just a note on our, our structure is that we're funded by three percent of the local hotel tax. Uh, we call that the visitor tax. Workforce, you can see that workforce, workforce, uh, has stayed steady over the last ten years. Either fourteen or fifteen staff members, uh, over the last ten years. It's not changing in F Y twenty six. Tourism as an economic engine, um, beyond proud to report that, uh, for the third consecutive year, the old Office of Tourism, uh, recorded record traveler expenditures, six hundred million dollars, uh, in traveler expenditures in twenty twenty three, uh, in Sangamon County. So that's the third consecutive year we've set record traveler expenditures. Very proud about that. Uh, eighteen point eight million local tax revenues, five thousand people employed, uh, in the tourism industry in Sangamon County. Uh, a true economic engine. Uh, we believe that tourism and travel is one of the solution to any budget woes, uh, that the city may have. As far as our F Y twenty six initiatives, uh, the Tourism Academy, that's an online customer training, uh, tool for our tourism partners. It'll be, be open to hundreds of our tourism partners, uh, to improve customer service. Uh, the more visitors we have, uh, the better we want our customer service and certainly want them to return. So we're excited about that. Uh, we've been gearing up for it, it's upon us, we're one year out. The Route sixty six Centennial and America's two hundred and fifty preparations. Uh, I've been working with the mayor, uh, on the two hundred and fiftieth. We really want to be sure we're ready, especially for July fourth of twenty six. I know we're talking about the F Y twenty six budget, but we need to prepare, uh, before our F Y twenty seven budget if we're going to get ahead of it. Uh, we've been talking about Route sixty six for some time, and, uh, we'll kick it off in January of twenty six, still within this fiscal year, uh, with an epic road trip. Think about when we took Abraham Lincoln to New York City. Think about our award-winning trip to the NFL Draft in Kansas City. Uh, it's going to be that epic. We're going to kick off the centennial year for Route sixty six, telling the nation and the world, uh, that Springfield is the place to be, uh, to celebrate the centennial. Uh, we'll have social media posts, uh, we'll have media interviews, and, uh, we believe that's the way we should kick it off and, and way we should start the centennial. As much time and effort we put into it and the millions of dollars that the State of Illinois has invested, uh, in the Route sixty six Centennial, we believe that's the best way to do it. Uh, Zartico, that's our human movement data, that's going to replace Place R I. We've been using Place R I for, uh, several years, that'll replace it. That's how we tell, uh, who's coming here and where they're going while they're in town. So that's our, how we track our visitors and figure out where to spend our marketing dollars. Shield Sports Park opening, we talked a little bit about that earlier, some other departments, absolutely. We've been waiting on this for thirty years. Shield Sports Park is going to open this year. Uh, it will have tournaments, a full slate of tournaments in twenty twenty six. So, uh, the Visit Springfield team will be gearing up for that, uh, that opening up this spring and summer. Springfield welcome signs, we'll revisit those, those are in the budget. Uh, we want to improve our gateways, we know with the Shield Sports Park moving in, we know with the Route sixty six Centennial, expecting a million international visitors, not only here for the centennial, but North America hosting the World Cup, that we want to be ready. So we want to be sure that we have the welcome signs in our gateways, uh, throughout Springfield. And then local tourism grants, we haven't had local tourism grants, uh, since twenty twenty, and, uh, well, they went away in twenty twenty, so, uh, twenty nineteen. And, uh, we're going to reinstate the local tourism grants. There are some local events that may not be destination events, but they're good for quality of life in the city of Springfield that we see did not happen. And I, uh, Mayor Busher was adamant that we want to see these events returned. So, uh, we are adding some local tourism funding for these local events, uh, to help them out. As far as, as far as budget, you'll see here, uh, overall, down eighteen percent. A lot of our budget is dependent upon our grants, and you'll see that the contractual line, you know, we're down twenty eight percent. A lot of our projects, uh, that happen in the contractual lines are grant funded. So it all depends on our, how we're flowing with our grants. We had seven grants, uh, last year, we have four grants this year. Some of that money that's been available since twenty twenty is drying up. Uh, so generally, before twenty twenty, we had two grants, our local tourism grant and our international grant. We're fortunate enough that Route sixty six money has continued. Uh, we'll see if that happens with the state's budget for their F Y twenty six budget, uh, starting July first, if there's another round. Uh, I'm not anticipating that, but you never know, certainly will apply for that. But, uh, we've been fortunate in that sense. So our budget does have the new initiatives, uh, but it is lower, uh, than the past year. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Scott, two questions. Maybe I misunderstood you, back to the Shield Sports Complex, you mentioned twenty five and twenty six. It's going to open in twenty five with a full schedule in twenty six and some schedule in twenty five, or what's the timeline here?
Yeah, so the, the opening, my understanding is the developers will, uh, inflate the dome sometime in April, and then they'll open up the, the outside, the fields this year, this summer. Uh, but, you know, when you're still under construction, it's hard to, to book tournaments, right? Full slater tournaments. Uh, our rights holders are waiting, uh, for the, the park to open up, uh, but it's hard to really put a schedule together. So yes, there will be tournaments out there, but we're talking about a full slate of tournaments in twenty twenty six.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, and certainly District twenty six will be able to practice on the field as well.
And then second question on the, uh, on the Springfield welcome signs, part of our beautification, I think. I mean, where do you anticipate, I mean, obviously the, you know, I don't know, four, five, or six main entrances into Springfield, or what do you anticipate on the? What do you anticipate on these welcome signs?
Yeah, so our gateways, and we'll take a look at our gateways. I know the, the mayor has some ideas. Two years ago, we floated putting a Welcome to Springfield graphic over Veterans Parkway, the Walbass Bridge that spans about eighty feet. We proposed that, but it, it just didn't come to fruition. So we did the Clear Lake two years ago now, or redid the Clear Lake Welcome to Springfield just a couple of years ago. So something similar to that at our gateways that welcome people to town.
Yeah, no, I agree. Okay, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Chair. Scott, I just want to say to you, good job on this year's. You know, we, we had a Black Rodeo here that, that was fantastic out at the fairgrounds. Juneteenth obviously was, was one of the best that we've ever had. In fact, that artist is, looks like he's back traveling. He's, he's going to be in Decatur this year and the bike show. I know those things play significant tourism to Springfield. So I compliment you and your team on bringing that in and the goodies that we took out there. I, I know we've, we've talked about the sports complex a few times and I, and I must say that it, it is good and I know we're dependent on it, but it worries me just a little bit with, with the, just the, the building piece. You know, I'm really, really hoping that, that we can get the building piece done after the fields is all settled. We can get some tournaments going and stuff so that can be some other sports out there. It worries me a little bit that we may not see that portion of it, but, but I'm, I'm still hopeful. And my last piece with that, and this will be corporate counsel and of course, Alderwoman No Toronto, is the community engagement piece with this. It looks like it's done. Have we gotten anything back from them on the community engagement piece that's in their, their contract of what they're supposed to be doing? I know they're doing something with the school district, but that's, that's the school district and their money I'm talking about with us.
I will need to check with OPED as they're administering that portion through that contract. So I will check with them to see where that piece lies.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. That's all my questions.
And, you know, Alderman, if I may put some of your reservations that he's. The Shield Sports Park was the buzz at all of our sports tourism trade shows and appointments this year. They're talking about the Shield Sports Park. They cannot wait to play on the fields. And let me tell you, the Shield Sports Park is going to be unique because it's directly connected to the city. Generally, you have to drive thirty or forty minutes to go to a sports park and then go back to your hotel and what have you. I mean, it's going to be truly unique that we have all the services, all the attractions of Springfield connected to the sports park. And I think that's going to attract many other teams. And then also, we have ninety million people living within five hundred miles of Springfield. So think about that, that drivability. That's going to allow teams. And you're going to see some very, very large tournaments here, if not in '25, certainly in 2026.
All right, all right. Thank you. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Alderwoman No Toronto.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for your presentation. Very interested to see more about the sports park. My question, though, is more about the gateways. So in Ward Six, I think I have a couple of, you know, potential spots. And in one already, one gateway on Sixth Street by Stanford. And this is, I, I don't even know if it falls under your purview or what you could do about it. But the things that I see as a resident there that aren't doing us any favors is it's hard to get IDOT to maintain those medians. And, you know, in the summer and spring, there's weeds everywhere and it just sort of looks, I don't know, not well-traveled. It's just, it's not a welcoming, welcoming point of view. So I don't know if there's anything your office could do to liaise with IDOT or maybe just keep it on your checklist of, you know, keep things looking good on Stanford and MacArthur and, and on Sixth Street coming into town from the interstate.
Yeah, I mean, we'll continue to work with Public Works and certainly the, the state and keep that on our radar. Maybe we can provide some distractions, right?
Yeah.
To that, you know, if there isn't a solution immediately, but we can provide some distractions and certainly make it something colorful that people want to look at and welcome them to Springfield. So maybe they missed some of that. But no, we will continue to work on that. We understand what, what you're talking about. And sometimes that is a challenge, but we'll continue to work on it.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you, Director. If there's no other questions, we'll move right along. Next up is the library. Sixty percent, right, Scott?
Sixty percent, absolutely. Thank you.
Director, the floor is yours.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Busher, City Council, and distinguished guests. I am excited to present the Fiscal Year '26 Budget Summary on behalf of Lincoln Library. Present with me today is the Lincoln Library Dream Team of Managers. Everybody wave.
That's right, Miss Hooty.
Thank you, thank you. I'm trying to be quick, so. This is the current depiction of our Lincoln Library organization chart. There are no surprises here. We are nearly fully staffed, but a few vacancies remain. Our longest-standing employee has been with the city of Springfield for forty-two years. I think that's amazing.
Congratulations.
And our newest employee joined the ranks is on December 30th of, of 2024. Daily, the Lincoln Library Dream Team serves citizens with passion and dedication, always putting on display their talent, effort, creativity, and intellect. They continue to make coming to work energizing. For Fiscal Year 2026, no new positions have been requested. I continuously receive pleasantries regarding the Library Dream Team. I repeatedly pass these kudos on to the staff as this recognition is always encouraging. Regarding the Fiscal Year '26 Budget, we actually came in under budget from the previous fiscal year. There is a four point seven eight percent variance in the Personnel Services line as a result of raises, unemployment compensation, et cetera. In the Contractual Services line, we experienced a slight bump due to the lease-to-own agreement for the CopyCoin vendor towers that will allow cash, debit card, print transactions. We are moving to a pay-to-print model soon. The Commodities line went down because our previous year, previous year's spending predicated that it was in line to do so. The Equipment line decreased due to the million-dollar HUD Community Project Fund Grant sponsored by Senator Durbin that will allow for the youth services renovation. Receiving this grant offset monies previously budgeted for the youth services upgrade. The telecommunications line increased due to licensing agreements. And I'm really glad to say this, the Elevator Modernization Project was completed in the spring of 2024. And this resulted in a hundred percent reduction in the Permanent Improvements line. Overall, our budget experienced a twelve point two oh percent decrease. For the reasons as explained, we continue to operate a lean, mean public library machine. As in the case of, of the majority of budgets, operationally, Personnel Services are typically the lion's share of your budget. Lincoln Library's Personnel Services are running at seventy-two percent of the total budget versus twenty-eight percent in operations. Regarding our workforce totals, we remain at sixty percent women and forty percent minorities. From CensusReporter.org, the city of Springfield is fifty, fifty-two percent female and twenty-nine percent minority. Overall, library demographics are progressive. We have showed this slide to you before, but it's important to reiterate. According to the, to the Illinois Library Association and based upon the city of Springfield population, the minimum staffing level should be eighty-eight point six oh, full-time, six zero, full-time employees. We are troubling behind in this area. It does give one moment for pause. But I must give a shout out for the support of the mayor and library board as the Library Dream Team continues to deliver strong and consistent high-level services that meets the needs of our citizens daily. Onto accomplishments. When you enter the library, a staffed, a welcome desk will be right there with our security team. Under the leadership of Deputy Chief of Security Klett Felder, who has a dual position between the library and CWLP, we are proud to report the following statistics. From years 2023 to 2024, there has been a twenty-six point one six eight two percent drop in incidents at the library. The safety conditions of Lincoln Library and the Municipal Center West have significantly improved due to the resources allocated under Mayor Busher's administration, the support from the Springfield Police Department, and the introduction of proactive security measures, new policies and procedures grounded in the broken windows theory aimed at preventing infractions, misconduct, and criminal activities. Let me state for the record, the library is a safe space which will allow for exploration, discovery, and enlightenment. Our Access Services Manager Greg Regal keeps a watchful eye, watchful eye on all things related to circulation and extension services. Access Services is fully staffed. His staff are usually the first to greet you once you enter the library and help you navigate your library experience. The Lincoln Library Board adopted, approved and adopted the Cards for Kids Act to waive non-resident fees for everyone under the age of eighteen, regardless of their financial ability to pay for a non-resident card. All children now have access to the public library. This is intended for children that reside in unincorporated areas that do not have their own library. We are proud to contribute to a more literate society with this offering. And we're also delighted to announce to you, if you have not, oh my goodness, I forgot this, the book vending machine. With entry the bookworm tokens, our children can take home a free book to start their own personal library collection. We offer incentives to obtain tokens to select a book. And this offering has been met with much success. And if you would like a token, I can give you one tonight, so. We'd like to talk about a very popular outreach program and it's called the Gathering of the Bookalos. This off-site, bring-your-own-book club has no assigned reading. You just bring your book in any format and quietly read along with others doing the same. It is a time dedicated for reading, learning, and just hanging out with folks in the community. I encourage you to check it out. The highly awaited Bookmobile will be on the scene in 2025. I'm not going to give you a date because every time I do, it changes. But it's coming, I promise you. My team has been working hard on getting together the first-day collection, establishing routes in all ten wards, and prepping for Springfield's Mobile Branch Library. And this department is now fully staffed as well. I, I already announced that the youth services will be undergoing a complete renovation due to the HUD grant. But we'd like to talk about our summer reading program because it is, it enjoyed its biggest numbers post-COVID. They offered forty-four programs in June and July. Their program attendance was one thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight. And they had five hundred participants between the ages zero and eighteen sign up for the summer reading program, which is pretty phenomenal. Our teen librarian Carly Pettifer joined our ranks recently this year and she is doing an amazing job with her teens, reaching out and connecting to them. And to that end, we also received a Secretary of State, Illinois State Library Project Next Generation Grant, which targets programming and activities with, with teens. So more to come on that next year. As of December 30th, the Sangamon Valley Collection is now fully staffed. Of note, Anna Seelof was the recipient of the Adelaide M. Susslich Award for Historical Research. She also presented a program at the library titled Women in Baseball based upon her research using resources at the library. We are really, really proud of Anna. Another program that garnered success was the Walk with Pride, a tour of Springfield's LGBTQ plus history. This program featured a free walking tour of historic LGBTQ plus sites in downtown Springfield. 2024 was the first full year the Colab, Lincoln Library's Maker Space was open. The grand opening had a total attendance of fifty people. If you would like to take advantage of your creativity, please visit the Colab. We have open hours every week and monthly programming events that include creating your own podcast, 3D printing, the use of the cricket, sewing, embroidery machines, and more. Regarding community programming and community engagement, it is at the heart of the services offered at Lincoln Library. In 2024, the library team performed splendidly in delivering and working with community partners to deliver top-notch programs. For example, the Civil Civic Series, which was intended to promote civic engagement and entice members of the public to take an active interest in their government, both national and local, by providing relevant and topical education and information. In partnership with Juneteenth, Inc., we provided an evening of entertainment, which included a talent showcase, the work of local artists on display, and more. The 1908 Race Massacre Commemoration was held at Lincoln Library. It included guest panelists discussing the significance of this pivotal moment in Springfield and national history. We partnered with Looking for Lincoln Incorporated to host the inaugural Journey to Freedom exhibit, which enjoyed between September and November 30th, twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-one visitors. You will als, you would also find Lincoln Library at community events such as local parades, the Levitt Amp Concert Series, the Farmer's Market, just to name a few. And we are also pleased to announce that the Public Library Elevator Modernization Project has been completed. The elevators are safe, inviting, spacious, and aesthetically pleasing. And I talked about it earlier, but the only new initiative that I can speak about is the renovation of the, of the youth services due to the receipt of the Economic Development Initiative Community Project Funding Grant administered by HUD. This opportunity was sponsored again by Senator Richard Durbin. The library has plans to create more space for kids and teenagers to allow them to experience the love of reading, play, and exploration. We are looking forward to getting this off the ground. Finally, I'm done. That ends my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Good job, good job. Nicely done. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. I've been looking forward to your presentation. Really fabulous, exciting things you've been doing this year and I'm looking forward to the future years. You know we were going to ask about when the Bookmobile is coming.
I know.
But we're expecting it by summer?
Okay.
Okay, I saw a nodding, so I'm going to take that answer. I didn't say a date.
Well, the last report was there was a bracket that was wrong for a seat mechanism. So they, they had to check and order the bracket and.
Make sure the seats are, are in correctly.
It's important.
Yeah, that, that sounds good and important. I appreciate that. So I, yeah, I'm just, I'm really thrilled to see what's going on at the library, the engagement and the outreach that you do. And, and I hope you know how important the library is to our community that you're the one budget for tonight that I did get some questions asked about. So if you could, because I think some people were looking at the, you know, sixty, almost sixty percent reduction in your budget and then the hundred percent reduction in permanent improvements. You, you did go over the grant that's taking the children's library and improving it. And I'm hopeful that that was clear enough to, to kind of make that, get that across. But can you kind of just, again, the permanent improvements, because it's a separate line. What does that hundred percent reduction reflect?
That's the elevator. That was the elevator.
That's the elevator?
That's the elevator.
Okay. So I just want to be really clear. We aren't cutting your budget.
No.
You've just created big, you've just finished big projects and we, and acquired an additional grant fund.
Exactly.
Wonderful. Okay, because, yeah, when it comes, when it comes to really the heart of our community, we look at the library and, and. we look at the library and you feel such a role. So thank your staff, please, for all their engagement. I see them all over the place.
Yes, they are.
Please, please share my appreciation with them for what they do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Any other questions of the director? Nicely done presentation, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the clerk's office, I'm looking at them. If we're ready to proceed, why don't we move on to ordinances and resolutions table the remaining committee, and I will pass the gavel to Alderwoman Conley.
All right, thank you, everybody. So that was the end of our budget presentations for tonight. Reminder, we'll be back here on Thursday, so don't make evening plans except to be here. Okay. So now that we've finished our presentations, ordinances for committee consideration. Clerk, can you please read the ordinance? Sorry, we're going to start with ordinances table the remaining committee. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any action on any of these ordinances?
Yeah, I got a question, I'm sorry. Did we, did we do something last week with one of these? Alderman Donlin?
I believe we did, and I think it was 539.
I think it's already been, we adopted it.
It's not on the agenda.
Okay.
We just have a couple of grants that are included on the agenda still. Okay. Any other questions for ordinances being held in committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinances for committee consideration. We'll start with CWLP. Clerk, can you please read the ordinances for CWLP?
Yes. 2025-001. An ordinance accepting bids and authorizing proposal UW25-42 Liquid Chlorine with JCI Jones Chemicals Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $338,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Do we have a motion?
Move.
Second.
For?
Move to consent.
Second.
Okay, motion and second for consent. Alderman Rockford, do you still have a question, or was that?
No, I'm.
Okay, I just want to be sure. Is there any questions on this ordinance? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
2025-002. An ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UW25-11-45 in hydro ammonia for a one-year term with Tanner Industries Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $50,105.60 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move consent.
Second.
Motion and second for consent, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
2025-003. An ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UW25-11-46 Cadionic Polymer for a one-year term with Charis LLC in an amount not to exceed $202,800 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move consent.
Second.
Motion and second for consent, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
2025-004. An ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UW25-11-47 Fluorosilic Acid for a one-year term with Univar Solutions USA Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $56,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move consent.
Second.
Motion and second for consent, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
2025-005. An ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UW25-11-52 Fire Hydrants with Illinois Meter Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $813,330 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Motion and second for consent, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
2025-006. An ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE25-10-44 General Use Maintenance Gases and Calibration Gases with Ilmo Products Company in an amount not to exceed $156,915 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move consent.
Second.
Motion and second for consent, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
2025-007. An ordinance approving payment in the amount of $40,000 to the Sangamon County Soil and Water Conservation District for Lake Springfield Maintenance and Restoration Program and the Lake Springfield Watershed for fiscal year 2025 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move consent.
Second.
Motion and second for consent, is there any discussion? Alderman Carlson, I'll give you one shot, not two.
Yeah, exactly. Is this a, I don't know, who can answer this, Doug? Is this a yearly grant, or is this a one-time deal, or what? What's going on with this?
Now, this is typically a yearly, annual type of grant that we do with them.
Okay, it's been.
Yeah, I mean, there's other grants that we do that are bigger, like we do with like the Illinois EPA 319 grant.
Right.
Yeah.
But with soil and water conservation, it's been the last couple of years, maybe, or? Yeah, with the soil, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this has been going on longer than that.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
It has been going on before I even took over.
Oh, it's a long time, all right, thanks, Ray, thanks.
Hi, thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Do we have any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor for consent?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
2025-008. An ordinance approving payment to Trimble Incorporated, doing business as Trimble Navigation Limited in an amount not to exceed $163,130.67 for annual software maintenance and related services for a one-year term for the outage maintenance systems for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move consent.
Second.
Motion and second for consent, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Public Works. 2025-009. An ordinance approving change order number two with Truman L. Flats &amp; Sons Incorporated for the FY 2024 by Two Minutes Overlay Program by authorizing an additional $129,949.16 for a total not to exceed $5,155,791.9 for the Office of Public Works.
Move consent.
Second.
Motion and second for consent, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
2025-010. An ordinance approving the variance request of Section 153.158B2 pertaining to access to a public street for the replat of Lot 3 and 5 of Town and Country subdivision for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent?
Second.
Motion and second for consent, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
2025-011. An ordinance approving or denying the preliminary plan of the replat of Lot 3 and 5 of Town and Country subdivision for the Office of Public Works.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and second to approve. Is there any discussion on this?
Is this for consent?
Oh, I'll, yeah, sorry, consent.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Approve for consent.
Right.
Okay. Motion and second to approve for the consent agenda, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
2025-012. An ordinance approving the variance request of Section 153.157K pertaining to multiple access in Wabash Park for the Office of Public Works.
Move consent.
Second.
Motion and second for consent, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
2025-013. An ordinance approving the plan for the large-scale development of Wabash Park for the Office of Public Works.
Move consent.
Second.
Motion and second for consent, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
General City Business. 2025-014. An ordinance approving the appointment of Shannon Carrick to the Springfield Historic Sites Commission.
Move for debate.
Second.
Motion and second for debate. I will ask, is Shannon here tonight? Oh, come on up, please. Introduce yourself. And I just realized, we have, we did not move our podium back. Do you mind having us here?
We're good, just let it.
Good evening.
Good evening, welcome. I just want to preface this with, your appointment goes to the debate agenda because that's generally where we put appointments. So please don't feel that it's anything personal, it's just the standard procedure for us.
All right, thank you.
Please take a minute, introduce yourself, and.
Good evening, my name is Shannon Carrick. I have been with the Sangamon County, Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission since 2016. At the retirement of Molly Barons at the end of the year, I was appointed as Acting Executive Director effective January 1st.
Congratulations.
Do we have any questions, Ms. Carrick?
Thank you.
No, thank you very much for coming in tonight. Do we have any other questions regarding this ordinance? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second for the debate agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
2025-015. An ordinance authorizing payment in the amount of $29,069.25 to Alfred Eugene Powell, a former City of Springfield firefighter, for settlement of a workers' compensation claim for case number 17-WC-014239.
Move consent.
Second.
Your motion and second for consent, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
2025-016. An ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of a grant from Norfolk Southern Corporation Safety First Grant Program in the amount of $27,007 for replacement of PFOS Free Firefighting Foam and authorizing supplemental appropriation in the amount of $27,007 for the Springfield Fire Department.
Motion for consent.
Second.
We have a motion and second for consent, any discussion? I would just like to say, Chief, I appreciate, you don't need to come up, really. I just want to say, I appreciate very much you making changes like this to, not just for our residents, but for our firefighters' safety. So thank you for that. There are no other questions for the chief? All those in favor for consent?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
2025-017. An ordinance declaring 1010 East Edward Street to be surplus property, directing the sale of said real property and authorizing the publication of a notice of said sale and request for proposals for the Office of Budget and Management.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Motion and second for consent, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Hey, do we have any unfinished business to come before this council tonight? No, how about any new business? Oh, Alderwoman Otriano, I was waiting for Alderwoman Purchase.
Oh, yes, I do have some new business. Okay. Yep, so I, is Director Fuchs here?
He's hiding.
He was trying not to be here.
I, I, I would have.
Hard time walking with all but you, he's got the last couple.
Oh, no. I would have emailed you about this, but this is sort of hot off the presses.
Hot off the press.
Yeah, so I get everybody up to speed. I had spoken at our infrastructure meeting about the state of the roads in Trevi Gardens. I, a resident had forwarded to me a text message from Republic saying that they, excuse me, weren't going to pick up trash in Trevi because the roads were snow-packed. So.
Many of the roads in Trevi Gardens are owned by the development of Trevi Gardens. And a lot of the trash containers are at the end of those roads, and they have not plowed a lot of those roads. Roads that belong to the City of Springfield. I was through there Sunday afternoon with Superintendent of the garage, and we have been through, plowed through Trevi Gardens on those routes that are responsible. Close look at their map, a lot of the shorter roads, you'd almost call them alleys, that join a lot of the garages where people have their garbage cans out actually belong to the.
Okay. This is a resident who's actually on the main, one of the main stretches, Venetian, who hasn't had trash service in a while.
Well, as of last week, last Friday, Republic called all their people off because of the road conditions, and they are running behind schedule.
Okay, okay. So you think this is just the wider?
I do.
Okay. Would you mind talking to Christina about it to make sure?
Do you have the actual address?
Ooh, it would be, from the top of my head, I would say like 2400-ish Venetian.
I'll speak with her first thing in the morning.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Alderwoman, did you have anything else?
Oh, I do believe that's it, yes.
Okay. All right, any other new business to come for us tonight? Okay, so we're going to take a brief pause between new business and citizens to speak before the council and clean up our table here and give a little more space to everybody. Thanks, guys.
Ethan, easy there, easy, buddy.
That's right. That was my jumping.
Testing.
Okay, thank you very much to everybody. We appreciate you pitching in and getting that moved. Okay, we are not taking that much of a break, Alderman Donlin. Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
I have Steve Simpson Black.
Stephen, and I believe, Stephen, you have someone coming up with you, so two speakers for the price of one.
Yes.
Thank you. I will add, before you start, just so everyone knows, I know you'll be speaking on a petition that was already passed out and at your desk before you sat down. In Corporation Counsel, I gave you two copies, one for the mayor and one for you.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Steve Simpson Black, reside at 2601 Varsity Court in Ward 1. Last week, the council decided to appoint our alderman to the clerk's position, so our position, the position for alderman is now vacant. And I had a lot of conversations with a lot of people about how that vacancy would be filled. We want to avoid the kind of confusion and consternation that was around the clerk's appointment. So I'm just going to read the text of the petition that was passed, and we put it on change.org, which is a great platform. So here it is. On January 7, 2025, Ward 1 Alderman Chuck Redpath was appointed to the city clerk following the resignation of Frank Lesko, who became Sangamon County Recorder. The process to appoint Chuck Redpath was not well communicated to the public, causing confusion and frustration among some Springfield residents. Because Chuck Redpath is now our city clerk, his position as Ward 1 Alderman is vacant. To restore and maintain confidence in city government, this petition is requesting that Mayor Misty Busher lead with a public and transparent appointment process. Mayor Busher should advertise the vacancy widely on all platforms, radio, newspaper, social media, and the city website. She should consider all applicants fairly and transparently, and she should consult with the full city council on a public forum during a regular committee or council meeting or during a special council meeting scheduled well enough in advance for all who wish to participate, having the ability to do so. This petition does not take a position on who should be appointed. We leave that to the mayor to do in accordance with the city city ordinances and the advice and consent of the nine remaining city council members. We believe that the above outlined process will provide ample opportunity for the citizens of Ward 1 to participate in choosing who will represent us, them, on the city council through 2027. So in front of you, there is the change.org petition, as well as the names that signed up there, and also some signatures that my neighbor Jane Ford collected.[1734.81] Would you like to speak, Jane?
Jane Ford, 4109 Pickfair Road, Ward 1 resident. Understanding that the circumstances did not allow for a special election for Ward 1 alderman, the residents of Ward 1 do have a right to expect a public process that will, number one, hear what candidates for the position have to say, and number two, present comments on the person who will be representing them. Citizens of Springfield have the right to expect that city council members will have adequate time to review all resumes for the position, as well as hear and question all candidates in a public forum that is well-publicized. Thank you.
I'll just add, just some comments. We just went through the budget, you know, the overview, and I think there's some very big decisions that are gonna be in front of the city in the next few years. Some of you will not be here for those decisions, but it's really important that we have good representation, especially in Ward 1. It's a very sprawling ward, it's a very big ward, and oftentimes, just based on the character of where we live, it's very rural in a lot of ways, having a strong alderman or alderwoman is really important for us to be connected to the city. So, that's why we think this is so important. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, both of you for coming in. Appreciate it. Next person signed up to speak?
Jane, oh, sorry, Erin Cahill.
Hey, guys, Erin Cahill, a Ward 6, yeah, constituent. Couple things. They kinda, you know, took it straight to the, you know, gave it to y'all straight. It's what I was up here to say originally. Another curiosity I had, we have a, an event coming up, January 20th, and I'm curious what the city is doing to protect folks. We've got some vulnerable populations that are facing some very big issues involving their lives, and I think it's time that the city takes a good, long, hard look and kind of determines what we're gonna do to protect those populations. Those of you who aren't familiar with what's happening, undocumented immigrants are already starting to be attacked. LGBTQIA folks are starting to be attacked. The unhoused population is starting to be attacked. It's, they're still constituents of this city, regardless of if they've got a house or if they're here legally. We got a lot of folks that need help in this city, and I think it's time that the city starts figuring out how we're gonna protect those folks, you know? Specifically, our immigrants. Federal government's already looking at opening up more, more camps to put folks in, to send them back across the border. These people do jobs that none of us want to do. They tend our farmers' crops, they help the farmers, you know, so I think it's high time that the city gets on the same page as the state and starts looking at what we can do to protect these folks. The state can only do so much, and the city's gotta step up and help. I think it's high time that the city kind of steps up and, you know, instead of passing ordinances, making June 5 Jim Bob Day or some crap, let's see what we can do about passing some ordinances that are actually gonna help these folks. I see we don't have our mayor, so, you know. All right, oh, Clerk, too. All right, thanks.
Thank you. The next person to sign up to speak?
Ken Pasha.
Does Redpath need prayers? Is he unwell?
He's unwell.
I, I will ask that we just kind of, if you sign up to speak, hold your comments until you get up here. Thank you. Mr. Pasha, please go ahead.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start off by reading from the ordinance you guys packed in June. It seems that there's been an extreme delay in processing these massage parlor licensing agreements, and I think the really funny part is, is you don't have to. You guys wrote the ordinance, you're familiar with the language, right? I am. We have massage parlors violating the ordinance right now in severe and very demeaning ways. We can go online right now to rub maps or skip the games and find multiple massage parlors in this city violating the ordinance openly, crassly, and disgustingly by offering traffic to human beings for rape by Springfield citizens. The city absolutely has the ability in the ordinance you passed back in June to deny their license automatically. They don't have to go through the process. You don't need the police to show up and arrest people, or the FBI to shut them down for you. You have the ability right now to do that. In the ordinance, the advertising they're doing violates it. The blacked-out and grayed-out windows violates it. The unlicensed massage therapist who they advertise as fresh new girl, that violates it. And the longer you sit here inactive, the more it seems like you either don't care or are willing to allow a blind eye to be turned to that kind of behavior. And to be quite honest, the more we find out about the people who own these establishments and who leases the locations to them, such as groups like the Real Estate Group here in town, and other leasing agents that openly and ardently continue to rent to people that sell human beings to be trafficked for sexual favors by Springfield citizens. You guys wrote an ordinance for this. Do something about it. Stop waiting for some magical FBI investigation to shut down the count 28 massage parlors that are running right now here in the city. I can go book right now. I've done it for chauffeur investigations. It's very easy, doesn't take long, and the rates are posted online. I mean, this stuff's all a violation of the ordinance you guys passed. The longer you stay inactive on it, it just makes you look in and up to the concerns and cares of people that yet again, don't fit into the majority grouping. Because quite frankly, I've talked about this before at the city council, about how we feel about the minorities that are living on the east and south sides of town in terms of funding, services, access, things like that. And while efforts are being made to do that, this is even more striking, because this is a very broad display of how we feel about people that can't advocate for themselves, that can't vote for you, that can't donate a dollar to your campaign or give you a sweet photo op. Instead, they're being raped right now, and the massage parlors that Misty explicitly has the ability to shut down. You have that power, the exact words. Every applicant for a license to maintain or conduct a massage establishment shall file an application with the city clerk, which, by the way, Chuck, your hair grew back, that's wild. I didn't even see that from last week.
Please address the chair.
So you guys have five days within receipt of an application for a massage establishment license to forward copies of such application to the Chief of Police, the Department of Public Works, the Fire Department, the County Department of Health, and the Office of Business Licensing. The Police Department, Department of Public Works, Fire Department, the County Department of Health, and the Office of Business Licensing may within 30 days of the receipt of a copy of the application inspect the premises proposed to be operated as a massage establishment and make written recommendations concerning compliance with codes, laws, regulations, and ordinances that each respective department ministers. The mayor shall thereafter review the application and make the final determination whether to grant or deny the application for a license under the article. The mayor shall determine whether to grant, deny, or hold an application for further investigation. I mean, at what point do you guys hold her culpable for the failure to do something about this? This is the ordinance you guys wrote back in June. It doesn't take that long to process these applications, and again, based off your ordinance and the very clear evidence that's very easily accessible out there, you don't need to keep waiting. So, I mean, at a certain point, I would expect you guys to do something about the continual rape of women that are trafficked from overseas to the city at over 20-plus locations. You guys don't have to agree with everything I say, but I would think that your basic humanity would be touched by the idea that right now, people are pulling up to these establishments eager to part with their cash to rape someone. Because that's what that is. When you're a sex-trafficked human being, you can't consent. So anyone going in there is a rapist. So, I mean, if you guys are okay with suborning possibly hundreds of rapes a day in your city and letting your mayor sit there complacent and inactive to those problems, shout out to the city council for blowing-
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak?
I have a comment.
Oh, sure, Alderman Williams.
So, is the chief here, Chief Scarlett here?
Don't ask the chief to come up here.
Excuse me, Alderman Williams, are your questions?
Yes, I'm asking-
Excuse me, Alderman Williams, for the police?
I'm asking the chief, and I'm asking Corporate Counsel, which department approves this license of these establishment that he's talking about? Because I would like the chief and the director of that department to come up.
The licensing process is, it's not police, it's administrative, so you can direct your questions.
Yeah, I would like both to come up. The chief for the law enforcement enforcing this, verifying if this is happening, what is his thoughts, information about this? The director on, if it is true, if this is happening, why haven't we pulled that license? So those are the questions I want, if these folks could come up.
If I could, Alderman Williams, sorry, Mr. Pasha, I was trying to talk to Alderman Williams. Excuse me, Mr. Pasha, I was trying to talk to Alderman Williams. Thank you. Alderman Williams, you wanted someone from the police department to come up also, is that correct?
And the department that regulates this, or licenses it, who are those individuals-
I know, Chief Scarlett said that he had to leave a little early tonight. We'll have to-
Alderman Williams, this is conducted through our business licensing department, so I would be the-
Okay, so I'm concerned that we don't never tell our side of it, if there's a side. This guy did come last week. This is serious enough that this is one that we don't just, you know, sit back. Somebody should be responding and saying, and communicating back and forth so we verify these things. He's just shown me some awful pictures. So all I'm saying is, without knowing anything and keep hearing this, we can't just let him speak and then nobody responds. We have to have that, so, so, so you want to be the one to address it? How come we haven't? First of all, are you aware of this?
Yes, we've, we've contacted 48 massage establishments in the city and worked through the application process with them, and, and some have, we've received some applications, we've done background checks. I have, I have dates for you. Some have been referred to legal, we've taken some legal action, some, some, we've, we've pro-act a building. That building has been repeatedly in violation, so we're looking at further court cases. I can give you a breakdown of, of the process for each of those and where we're at with, with each establishment.
Well, I might like you give it to all 10 of us, and then I also would like to just be fair about this as far as, if you're aware of this and have verified this is happening, there's any license has been pulled and things been shut down.
We, we have not issued licenses yet. We were in the, we, so, we established the process to, we needed to create the application, which we did, and then the internal process for businesses to apply, and then we received the initial round of applications, and then we sent zoning inspectors out to inspect the premises, and then our business licensing department is two people, and so they've been doing liquor license review, they've been doing video gaming license review, and they've been going to these massage establishments. And so, they've, so they've been generating reports on each of these places, whether or not they can come into compliance or not, and working with the establishments to say what the violations are and give them timeframe to come back. And then, we are at the end of this. We expect more buildings to be pro-act in the coming week or two, but we're, we've been going through this process, we've received, you know, copies of, and I could bring in our business licensing department, but Todd's been spending three or four hours with some applicants to go through the process to tell them what they need and to walk through our ordinance. So we have been trying to get businesses in compliance and also at the same time generating a list of businesses that-
So, and so, and that's where the other piece comes in. So where's the law enforcement piece? If it's happening as we're sitting here, as he says, and, and, you know, it's ongoing, you can do the administrative piece and be working on it, but has law enforcement responded? Is there assistant chief here, anybody? Is, I guess there's no-
Boy, can I offer something, because I've talked to the police in Chatham about this. Chatham shut down all these with the ordinance you guys had.
Well, I, I can't control that because the chair.
With ordinance violations, flat out, I'm just saying though, I've talked to human trafficking networks and groups that have done this, and the reason I keep coming to you and not Ken Scarlett is because, flat out, everyone says that you guys are the ones who have the power to do it, and you could absolutely shut this down tomorrow.
And we are-
Thank you, we're gonna allow, we're gonna allow-
We are in the process. I, I was the attorney that represented Chatham when they did that, so we're, we're going through that process now. There was one in Chatham, there's 48 we're going through now. We're trying to treat all the businesses this fairly under the ordinance and get it implemented at the city.
Trafficking should be treated fairly, right?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm gonna ask again, because we do have more council members who've signed up to speak. I'm gonna ask the members of the audience, we appreciate you coming in, certainly sign up to speak and use your five minutes, but while we're having our conversation, because these are important discussions that we're having, please keep your comments so that we can hear each other and we can hear the responses that are going on up here. Thank you. Alderman Nottriano.
Thank you, Chair. So, I assume, I don't know, I haven't talked to you specifically about which massage parlor is, is on your mind when you're bringing this up, but I, I have a feeling I know which one it is, and- Okay, well, there's, there's one in particular in my ward that I'm in touch with the residents who live very close to this establishment, sometimes daily. So, I, I definitely am aware of what's going on and passing that information on to Corporation Counsel, but of course, you know, everybody has due process in the United States. And so, um-
So I'd be looking at the one on 1560 Wabash, 1170 Isles.
Well, can I just, again, let's, let's, I think, yeah, if I could, if I could, please,
submit a list, that would be great. You can provide that to us. Well, if you have that list, I, okay, I'm just gonna say, we're not going back and forth. Alderman Nottriano has, is, has the mic, and-
So-
We can provide comments through email after the meeting also.
Yes, yes, thank you. So, what, what we have to keep in mind, this is, okay, this is the United States. People get due process and people are innocent until proven guilty, okay? So, we really have to be careful when we're approaching this with a do-something-now mentality. That's simply not how it works, because we could turn that do-something-now mentality on someone else, someone with fewer rights, and who is, you know, in, in, fewer rights than somebody who's in a greater risk, and do great harm to them, okay? So, it's, it's really important that we go about this the right way, and I appreciate what Corporation Counsel is doing, and I understand I am also very perplexed at how long this is taken, but one thing that I've learned in my time on city council is that everything that we do here as a government takes a lot of time, and, and that simply is because we have to protect people's rights, their property rights, their due process rights, whatever the case may be. But please know that I hear you. If there is a establishment operating in a ward that is not Ward 6, please email that alderperson and let them know. We do need your help. We need photos of, of people going in when they're not supposed to go in. We need, what would be wonderful is to have an actual victim come and, and tell us so we could prosecute whoever is, is trafficking them. So we do need your help, but you, you, you gotta work with us where we are, and like I said, find the alderperson whose ward it's happening in and, and reach out to them. And if that's unsuccessful, sure, you can reach out to me, I'll be the massage establishment liaison for the city. So, we hear you, and, and we are indeed doing what we can, especially in terms of the one massage establishment that is in my ward and that is known to many of my constituents and causing great consternation within the neighborhood, so.
Thank you very much, Alderwoman. Alderman Gregory?
Yes, my question-
Excuse me, I've asked once. Excuse me, I've asked you one, a couple of times now. Please allow Alderman Gregory now his time to speak. Thank you, Alderman.
No, just real quick, Corporation Counsel, when- No, just real quick, Corporation Council, when, while we're, um, getting these establishments, uh, qualified for licensing, are they, are they okay to operate? How does that work? Like, if, if we, they haven't got their license yet, but we see them operating, do they get a fine?
Yeah, that, that was, that was the discussion we had, because we already had establishments operating, uh, in the city. So we're, we're trying to get the application process established, um, and so we can issue them on, on a rolling basis. So we asked them to apply, but allowed them to...
But new ones established after our ordinance was, was put in place in June, they wouldn't be able to do nothing until they get their license, correct?
Right, we, we try to catch any new ones and tell them that they need to submit an application before they open, and, and, uh, but some, you know, some businesses can pop up, it's, it's hard.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Are there any other questions for Corporation Council?
I have a question.
Alderman.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, and, uh, you know, I want to make sure the message is clear to the public. If someone were to, uh, someone suspects that one of these establishments is operating illegally and these things are going on, these troubling things that we've heard about the last couple nights, meaning tonight and last week, who should they contact? Should they call the police? Should they call nine-one-one? What should residents do? Because these are serious, serious problems.
So I would encourage them to notify the police, um, I would encourage them to not- notify an alderperson and to contact me directly, because, because we're working with the police, we have different standards of proof that we, that we need, we have, we have different, um, different avenues of addressing this issue, and so I think it's best if both of us know. I think that, um, on the administrative side, you know, it, it, we don't have, we don't have to prove things beyond a reasonable doubt. Um, so we have, we have the ability to attack this problem from a different angle, and so I encourage going both routes. Letting the police know to make sure that they know about these establishments, letting the city know so we can work towards addressing it as well.
What I hear you say is, the, the licensing process that's new, that can, that is still going on and you're doing your due diligence there, but if people suspect that these wrongdoings are going on, they need to call the police immediately and/or you and/or their alderperson so they can get in the system and get it addressed right away.
Right, yeah, that, that would be what I would encourage, um, and like on our side, if we've already pro-act a building, that, that means, which we've done to some, one of these, um...
What does that mean?
So we, what it really means is we put a tag on there that says, "nobody's allowed in this building." People can cut those, but if, if they cut them and they're in the building and I know about it, we can go right into court and get a temporary restraining order, um, and, and again, move them out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Nottriano?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, just, uh, Alderwoman, or, sorry, Alderman Tonlin.
Promoted him.
It's been a long night. Uh, I, I would just like to say to you and caution to the public, um, the, calling the police is not always your best first move, right? We know when to call nine-one-one in an emergency, someone's in danger right now. Um, when to call dispatch? Oh, that, to me, you're going to get a better response if you reach out to your alderman if you have evidence or you see with your eyes, um, something that shouldn't be happening. Let's say that we put a sticker on the door and people are going in to, to this establishment after the fact, um, absolutely, that's when we, as administrators, need to know. Um, the police in that case, I mean, if they can get there to witness it, if not, um, yeah. I, I wish, I wish that the chief was here to speak to that better, um, but, but we have to be careful. I don't want us inundating, um, the non-emergency line with calls that the police can't actually do anything about, so...
And, and that's kind of what I was getting at, Alderwoman, if I can, Madam Chair, and I, I think what I'm hearing is call, at a minimum, call your alderman and/or the Corporation Council's office if it's something that's... I, I hate people to, hate people to be the judge. Any, anything that happens is serious. If it's, if it's an emergency call, if it's an emergency, call the emergency number. If not, what we talked about. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Alderwoman Purchase?
Thank you, Chairwoman. Um, with hearing the consensus around the horseshoe of the concerns, is this, I, I don't know where we stand with getting information, is this something that we get from you just as an update of where you are with the process and maybe can send to us, but I know that that's private, but when you have people reaching out or constantly every week coming, looking at everyone's face, it seems like a lot of people don't know what's going on, or is that something that Chief Scarlett should be sending to us?
No, um, I can circulate the, um, the document that we have that tracks the establishments that we know of and where they are in the application or enforcement process. Um, I'll share that with the council.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry, Chair.
That's fine, go ahead.
One last thing. Um, so, I would be remiss if I did not bring this up. Um, whenever I was working on this ordinance, I was approached by, um, owners of Asian massage establishments about the potential for discrimination, uh, against their establishments because of this controversy. So I really, really would like to stress to everyone out there, um, you, you really need to make sure that the accusations you're making are founded, and, um, absolutely in no way are we going to benefit from the harassment of certain massage establishments or massage establishment owners. Um, we should, yeah, just, we should all just be, um, good neighbors to one another and give people the benefit of the doubt. You know, you know how to treat people. You know how not to discriminate. Um, so please, please do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Do we have anyone else signed up to speak tonight?
Yes, uh, Brianna Roberts.
Ms. Roberts?
Um, so tonight, I want to address the systematic racism embedded in Springfield's funding practices and the social psycho- psychological, or, sorry, psychology that perpetuates these inequities. It's no secret that Springfield's East Side has been consistently overlooked for essential funding, uh, resources crucial to making East Side not just survivable but truly livable. While East Side wards tirelessly advocate for their communities, they are frequently let down while West Side wards seem to secure funding with ease. I want to begin by expressing my deep gratitude to Dr. Lisa Johnson, whose insightful research has illuminated these disparities. Dr. Johnson's presentation at the Economic Disparity and Service Accessibility Meeting highlighted the economic, political, and social, psychological violence experienced by Black residents and other people of color in Springfield, and most of this information came from her presentation. Springfield has a long history of racism that continues to shape decisions today. Many people are familiar with Springfield Race Riots, which is more accurately described as the Springfield massacre. Yet this is not an isolated incident, it is part of a larger systematic pattern. Historical practices like the thirties and forties redlining have played a significant role in shaping the inequities we see today. Redlining categorized neighborhoods predominantly those inhabited by Black residents as hazardous for mortgage lending. This practice led to an economic disinvestment in the East Side neighborhoods, leaving a legacy of underfunded schools, crumbling infrastructure, and limited access to resources. The nineteen eighty-seven Consent Decree, which created Ward Two, was meant to address inequalities in African-American voting power. Today, Ward Two remains home to much of Springfield's minority population and is still disproportionately underfunded. The effects of this history is evident in the unequal allocation of city resources, perpetuating a cycle of neglect and disinvestment. Social psychology offers insight into how these inequalities persist. Implicit bias, for instance, suggests that decision-makers often unconsciously harbor stereotypes about minority communities. In Springfield, this bias has influenced resource allocation, where predominantly white neighborhoods are prioritized over East Side wards. We also see the impact of white flight, where white residents have historically moved away from areas that have become more racially diverse. In Springfield, this trend led to the economic decline of urban neighborhoods as tax revenues shifted to suburban development. This decline, coupled with systematic racism, further exacerbates disparities in funding and opportunity. It's not just history, this is lived experience. I have lived it and I'm only twenty-six. It's exhausting to watch somebody like Ward Two Alderman Sean Gregory fight so hard for a fraction of the funding that the West Side receives so effortlessly, and it's equally exhausting to see the white members of this council, who have done inner work and understand their privilege, to fight for equality consistently being silenced or dismissed by others who refuse to reflect on their biases or privilege. And this is not an issue for minorities to only focus on. The majority, white residents of Springfield, have a duty to reflect on the stereotypes and beliefs they hold, whether conscious or subconscious about minority communities. Even those who believe they are not racist must confront how growing up white has given you the privilege to benefit from a system that was made in your favor. It is not the responsibility of minorities to teach others how to tweet, treat us as human beings. It is the majority's responsibility to reflect, acknowledge, and actively change. To the council, I'm also, um, asking for an update on programs like the Fix It Program, uh, which offered alternatives to citations for minor traffic violations by providing gift cards, uh, for vehicle repairs and the distribution of ring doorbells in high-crime areas. Uh, these initiatives were promising steps toward equality and safety, but you can't even Google them now, so like, I legitimately have no idea what happened to them. Um, and these could further benefit the underfunded communities in Ward Two, but again, unless I'm just not accessing the information, this is just another example of how Ward Two is underfunded and forgotten about. Springfield has the chance to lead with intention by acknowledging its history and addressing inequalities, but, and we have to commit to ensure that all residents have access to resources and the opportunities that they need to survive and thrive. So take that into consideration as you guys are going through this funding season. Thank you.
Alderman Gregory, I think, also, was one of those programs, were those under Mr. Posey?
Uh, no, it would be under the, um...
They're both the police department?
The police department. I will, I will say...
Ring doorbells, we, we have another round of those coming, right?
Correct, um, we, we do have some ring doorbells, um, coming out, um, into some high-crime areas and things of that nature, uh, once the weather breaks and stuff, um, we do plan on getting out there and doing some of that. Um, the original amount was cut just a little bit so we could put service with it, for people who need service. Um, I, I don't have too much information on the Fix It Program, but I do know that it, it is, um, rolling, um, and what's the other, what's the other, uh, program?
Those are the two?
Was those the two? Okay.
Those are the two I mentioned.
There's some other funding, uh, mechanism that came from the grant that we, that we've been working out from the state, um, that we look to, uh, deliver as well through our police department, um, so that's updates on those, but we can, we can definitely ask for some, uh, more concrete numbers for you, absolutely.
I don't want you to feel like this is against you at all. I see you fight, I hear you fight, okay?
I don't, I don't.
So it's for the people, mostly on the other side of the horseshoe that is constantly trying to discredit what you're asking for. So thank you for the answers that you gave me.
No, no, I don't, I don't take it at all. When everybody, whenever, whenever someone comes that way, and, and, and I'll just say, um, I thank you all for your comments over the time and, and, and the things, but I, I don't want you to, um, get it confused. We, we argue, we fuss, we fight, um, but, but this seat and, um, the East Side has had many, many victories and they've been hard and, um, despite over time to, 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 to get our communities up to code, it's always been us fighting the struggle, so, um, you know, we've lost some things, but we, we've got a lot of the, a lot of work done. I can tell you, um, I know a lot of people think me and the mayor doesn't get along, but I can, I can assure you that we, um, have, we have frequent talks and, uh, we agree on many things and, and some things we don't, but, uh, we do have those talks on about how, how to, um, get more funding to the East Side and things of that nature, and, uh, you know, I'm poised to work with everyone to do that, and I'm, 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 I'm be aggressive with it, I'm always gonna be asking for something, and, and I think that sometimes they, they get on people's nerves, but, um, it's needed and, and I thank you, so, appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, next person to sign up to speak?
Is Lori McHirren.
Good evening, Lori McHirren, Ward Four. Um, with the much appreciated and highly anticipated IRP announced by CWLP last month, I'd like to make reference to what is a sound reason to make sure that the IRP process includes a broad choice of scenarios to compare to burning coal at Dalman Four. So many of us have spoken here at these meetings about the serious impact to the environment, excuse me, by burning coal. What we haven't talked about very often is the severe impact to the farmland, infrastructure, and human health and life by the mining process itself. In December last year, City Council approved a contract for hauling coal from the Deer Run Mine near Hillsborough and the haulback of CCB, coal combustion byproducts, from Dalman Four and the flue gas desulfurization landfill. The contract says the waste will be transported to Deer Run Mine, however, that mine currently doesn't have a permit to store those CCB wastes. Springfield City Council and the public need to know where these wastes will be going for the next four, three years. Would you want to live or have your children and grandchildren bike and play blocks away from where these wastes would be going? In December, the Deer Run Mine posted the required public notice regarding a significant permit change application to the IDNR. The mine wants to raise the height of their coal slurry refuge disposal area structure from sixty-five feet to a hundred feet and steepen the sides. This huge high-hazard dam impoundment since, sits on essentially flat land that was the local airfield and farm fields. The permit area for this structure is about three hundred and eighteen acres, and the coal refuge disposal area covers most of that site. Think about that as the size of forty-two Chicago Bears football fields and taller than a seven-story building. Um, at this point, or the, currently, that impoundment slurry is just the coal waste, it's not the CCBs. So at this point, there is no public information on where the CCBs from Dalman Four will go to at the coal mine. So we can't close our eyes and cover our ears and ignore the potential very serious impacts to our neighbors to the south in Hillsborough. The location of the coal refuge disposal, the slurry pond, the impoundment, is less than a half a mile from their residences and their local hospital. This area has had a history of coal dust blowing on people's properties, including their yards and porches. Many pollutants can end up in the flue gas desulfurization sludge, this waste is often acidic and saturated with gypsum and other heavy metals. The CCBs contain pollutants that can affect everyone from infants to the elderly with a wide range of serious health impacts. The hazardous substances are concentrated in the ash when the coal is burned, making a dangerous mix of carcinogens, neurotoxins, and poisons. These are all potential hazards to the Hillsborough community. The continued mining of coal, to the emissions from burning coal, to the disposal of coal ash combustion byproducts, only continues the growing legacy of health problems that become public costs and long-lasting environmental damages to specific locations and to our climate. These costs need to be considered when assessing costs for affordability in the IRP process. So let me close by asking CWLP to explain at some point what will be done with these waste products from Dalman Four, and let me ask you if you care what will be done with it. It's not acceptable for any of us to say, "we don't need to know." We do need to know, the waste is hazardous to human health and life, and we must care. It's our waste and we're responsible for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person.
Salem King.
Look, we all know what happened last week. We might not know how it happened because our elected officials did this whole thing behind closed doors, but we know that Chuck Redpath is now the Springfield City Clerk. So my speech isn't about that. What's done is done. No, this speech is about what it means for the city and where we should go from here. Not long ago, the people of Springfield watched members of this council try to force through an ordinance criminalizing unhoused people, so strict and unpopular that it was given up on before a vote even took place. The only reason for that being that we mobilized. We mobilized in defense of our community and we won. The people of Springfield have also, over the, during that same time, watched people like Tiara Standage feeding people every Wednesday, holding community events, running a pantry and free closet, and just last November, she got eight unhoused people from the Fifth and North Grand Encampment housing for the winter, which was also done with the help of Heartland Housed, another group who has had to defend themselves to this council very recently. But was the council there when those people got shelter? Can this council defend itself, defend its own effectiveness and worth on the same ground that Heartland Housed was expected to? Members of this council, I know you can't answer, but aside from a handful of people like Alderman Gregory and Williams, we all know the answer. Have any of you ever volunteered at Intricate Mines? How many? How many of you sitting before us regularly spend any time just helping people, helping your own constituents? Because I know for a fact, many of the people behind me do. Are you even working on an ordinance to provide more meaningful support to unhoused people to actually house them? The people of this city have also watched as Alderman Hanauer tried to turn an ordinance giving $30,000 of a 215, sorry, $215, $100,000 grant to Better Life, Better Living for Kids, and One in a Million, and many other positive ordinances into a discussion about the process, even after being informed that the, that the ongoing process was standard practice. So let me ask again, even if we already know the answer, and this isn't about Alderman Hanauer specifically, but, you know, first example I thought of. Alderman Hanauer, did your constituents want that? Are you on this council to represent the interests of Ward Ten, or are you on this council to represent the interests of Alderman Hanauer? If members of this council will not do their jobs and push for the will of their constituents, if they are not going to be out there and in here taking material action to support the people of this city, then you can be damn sure, community activists like myself and the people behind me will be. So if we're doing that, while members of this council are talking down to people and representing their rich and powerful donors rather than the people of their ward, after a couple more months of this, whose side do you think the people of this city are going to take? After what they've seen recently, who do you think the people of Springfield are going to trust? This system and its actors who do nothing but bicker about the process, at least until the time comes to force out an undemocratic and harmful decision, or the community advocates like Tiara, Ken, Bree, Kaylee, myself, and God knows how many more, who are doing everything we can to help and advocate for the people of Springfield? It's a thought I think we should be, we should be considering. The only thing you're being asked to do, whether it be last week, this week, all the other weeks before, is to fulfill your job descriptions, advocate for and represent your constituents and this city, the people of this city, in every decision you make and every syllable you speak in this room. Aside from the older people for Wards Two, Three, Four, and Six, this council did not even attempt to give the people of Springfield a voice in the process to appoint someone for an elected position. Qualified members of our community like Aaron Cahill or the person who reached out to Alderwoman Nottiano weren't even given a chance. I know you're not here, but these are your constituents, Mayor, and you aren't even willing to give the older people they elected a meaningful opportunity to field candidates? I gotta go a little faster. So now a situation has been created where this council has demonstrated that are not only ambivalent to actually performing the job of public representative, but where not even the people we elect are able to meaningfully participate in the processes that run our city. My experience living in Springfield and growing up in Decatur has taught me to have faith in the people, to have faith that when things get bad, when our leadership fails us, we will take care of each other and make whatever change is necessary to do so, as we did with the unhoused criminalization ordinance. And if you think this council can maintain the trust and support of the people of Springfield on your current path, I can only assume you do not have such faith in the people. Otherwise, what gives you the confidence to so blatantly disrespect them? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else signed up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Robert Williams.
My name is Robert Williams. I would like to touch on, well, I've been sick. I would like to touch on a situation that occurred, been occurring with me since I've been approved for SSI. Andrew, I don't know if he worked for TASS or Heartland, but anyway, he's in charge of the people that didn't do nothing for me, and they know who they are. I'm not gonna put their name out there because I don't get down like that, but they know who they are. What I want to do is this, though. I'm in this hotel. All I asked them to do was when I got, and y'all are my witness, when I got approved for my SSI, was to pay my first month and my second month and let me take it from there. I'm in this hotel, I owe $360. My wallet came up lost. I, I don't know, but Shannon and them helped me get my bank card back, but my money was gone. But I owe $360 at this hotel, and I'm asking you all to, somebody to come for and pay this man, DJ, at the hotel. Now, Andrew, back to him, here goes the conversation I had with him recently, and I want to share what he said, what he had to say. And say, there are, hold on, let me get back to the front. Yeah, Mr. Andrew, what did you say at the Salvation Army? And did you talk to DJ? I asked him to get up with Salvation Army because this lady, this Asian lady, she had an apartment for sale, wanted $1,300, and she informed me that they was helping people with housing. So I told him about it. He didn't do nothing. This lady who came to see me, supposed to be working for TASS, she worked for TASS, she came to my apartment, came to my room, sat down, and the first thing he asked me was, what I'm doing going with a white lady? What is that? How the F you know what I'm doing and why is your business? That ain't why you came here. Then she never took me to go see a house. She said her boyfriend lived in this house and she wouldn't even recommend, she wouldn't even waste her time taking me there. So we never went. I've been trying to get my medication. I take psych medication, Respiral. I got high blood pressure, I got high cholesterol, and I got diabetes type two. I can't even get my medication because I have no transportation. And the people that supposed to be helping me are not helping me. Like this lady, she said she was gonna take me Thursday and Friday to get my medication, to no avail. She never showed up and I waited two days in a row and nothing happened. Then she said she was gonna take me to see a apartment and nothing happened. Now, Andrew, he, I talked to him, and like I said, he said he was gonna contact the Salvation Army, which he said right here, Salvation Army and me. Right now, I have been tied up and not able to do anything. I have let everyone know what you are needing and requesting. And we go right here, and I get back at him. Can you please get with him and let him know that I'm waiting for him to come see me so that we can talk? Now, he had told me that he had referred, took her off my caseload and put him, him on my case. So, which wasn't true. Now, this other person came, became, they replaced her with another person, and he brought me some food one day. Then the next day, he took me and this friend of mine to get my, get our link. The man told me I should get on my knees, said I should thank him and crawl to him. And I was like, hold up, who you talking to, man? I ain't no homosexual. You got me F up. And you will get F up if you disrespect me again. And he's like, got belligerent, got to tell me, man, you can get the F out of my car. I'm like, man, I ain't doing nothing. Okay, so when we got there, he apologized. He said, I'm sorry for being loud, what you, but dude, you was being more than just loud, you was being bogus. And you lucky you still talking. But like I said, I'm in the situation, I owe $360 right now, and they tell me I'm putting me out, you know? And here it is right here, y'all can look at it. I got everybody conversation.
Mr. Williams, have you, have you worked with our community outreach, our community director, Mr. Posey? Mr. Posey, who's sitting behind you, I, I know he, I know he's aware of you. I, I think some of these are issues that probably we need to make sure that our community relations can help you work with the social service agencies and, you know, that is...
2023, I got the joint. I volunteered and went to work for, they put the corners in our company. I went out, giving out, asking for votes, helping people. This one day, our trees was inside, almost inside a roof. I got them to cut them. Mr. Roy Williams, I met him real good, too. And I go out my way for him, you know? And so, he's cool. Sometimes, I write out.
I take that.
But it's comfortable, it's sad, but he needs to...
Maybe, maybe, Alderman Gregory and Williams, you could, you could sit down with, with Mr. Williams and, and Mr. Posey and, and try to facilitate something, too. Not to add too much to your list, but...
Absolutely. I know, I know Mr. Posey has worked with you before, and we all, we'll try and we'll talk with him, we'll see what we can do, brother.
And I know, Mr. Williams, you've helped Alderman Williams. Thank you. So thank you, thank you both.
You're so inclusive, thank you.
I try. Do we have, and if anyone else still signed up to speak?
Michael Higgins.
Mr. Higgins?
Chef.
Jeff, I saw him earlier.
Chef gone. That's it?
That was our last one. Okay. Thank you very much. Don't jump the gun too quickly. Is there a need call for executive session tonight?
No need for executive session.
No need. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Come on.
Move to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
All the persons, if any of you would like to see the evidence I very clearly have of nine different locations...